This is Tuesday, January 22, 2019, and this is a Prescott City Council voting meeting. Mayor Pro Tem, do you have some introductions or announcements?
I do. I would like to welcome County Supervisor Rowley Simmons to our meeting. Rowley, former mayor of Prescott, great to have you here. Thank you. I'd also like to bring some highlights today about the city of Prescott being one of the 19 places to visit, must visit in 2019. We were also on that list for 2018, one of the 18 places to visit, and this year we were the only city that stayed on the list twice. So congratulations to the city of Prescott.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
It's a good deal.
Normally, I wait to the end for a quote, but today I'm going to do one here as we get started. This is from President Ronald Reagan. On November 2, 1983, he signed a bill making the birthday of Martin Luther King Jr. a national holiday. So these remarks from President Ronald Reagan occurred at the time he signed the bill to recognize the national holiday, November 2, 1983. Each day on Martin Luther King Day, let us not only recall Dr. King, but rededicate ourselves to the commandments he believed in and sought to live every day. Thou shall love thy God with all thy heart, and thou shall love thy neighbor as thyself. President Ronald Reagan. Today, we have an invocation by Father Roche, and then, following that, the pledge led by Councilwoman Scholl.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. A reading from the Holy Gospel according to Matthew. Jesus said, "Again I say to you, that if two of you agree on ears about anything that they may ask, it shall be done for them by my Father, who is in heaven." Let us pray. God of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our city. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with charity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service. Remind us that we are stewards of your authority. Guide us to be the leaders your people need. Help us see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us, and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. And finally, Father, renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of a human person. We ask this as your sons and daughters, confident in your goodness and love. Amen.
You destroyed me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Father. Let's please call roll.
Mayor Mengarelli.
President.
Mayor Pro Tem Orr.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Good.
Here.
Councilman Lamerson.
Here.
Councilwoman Scholl.
Here.
Councilman Shishka.
You got it right. Yes, here.
All are present.
Thank you. Let's move on to proclamations, please.
Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., day of service.
Is there someone in the audience to receive this proclamation? I believe Kendra was to show, but I don't see her. We gave this proclamation yesterday at the march. It was a wonderful march, a little chilly. We had sleet and hail and rain and lots of wind, but it was a wonderful march. And I want to recognize Prescott College for doing that and the committee that put it together. We started at the college, went around the plaza, and then went back to the Presbyterian Church and had a great service. Proclamation, Martin Luther King Jr., day of service. Whereas in remembrance and honor of Dr. Reverend Martin Luther King Jr., we will remember to treat all people regardless of race, ethnicity, sexual orientation, gender, or religious and spiritual practice with dignity and justice. We will remember that nonviolence leads to peace and the manifestation of a beloved community, and Prescott is a beloved community. We will remember to manifest generosity in the giving and sharing of material, nutritional, and spiritual property. We will remember to choose words and actions in love rather than hate, knowing all that is great is only achieved and maintained through love. And whereas we will continue working to make Dr. King's dream a reality in our community that one day we will live in a nation where its people will be judged not by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character. And whereas Dr. King told us to never sleep, for bigotry and wrongs against people exist, we now respond to the injustice that only happens around the world, not only happens around the world, but also in our own community. Now therefore, Greg Mengarelli, mayor of the city of Prescott, does hereby proclaim, in honor of Martin Luther King Jr., day of service, through intentional conversations and strategic action about what diversity and inclusion really look like for all people who live, work, play, and learn in the greater Prescott community. We are keeping Martin Luther King's dream for a better future alive. Thank you.
Presentation from Mr. Mel Hannah, Mr. Charles Fanyel, and Ms. Connie Jackson.
Just to counsel.
Yes, I want to officially welcome you. This is my good friend, Mel Hannah, and he has brought with him Mr. Charles Fanyel, Michael Williams, where is Michael?
And Connie.
And Ms. Connie Jackson. They came all the way from Phoenix to be here with us today. And on the inauguration day, Mayor Pro Tem and I had the opportunity to go down and had the pleasure of meeting Mr. Hannah and Ms. Connie Jackson that day, and I had the opportunity to speak on the telephone with Charles Fanyel. And I just wanted to officially greet you on behalf of the city council. I want to thank you for being here today and taking time out of your schedule to come to Prescott, and it's been a real pleasure working with you and getting to know you, and just wanted to officially welcome you. You know, when people say public service, this man, and I'm sure the others with him, understand public service. Mr. Hannah has served on the Flagstaff City Council. He's served on the Coconino County Board of Supervisors. He's served with NACOG, and there's a long, long list of places that Mr. Hannah has served, and I wanted to recognize today his public service. He's a true statesman. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Greg. I will not mess up your last name. It's just an honor to be here, believe me. Mayor Pro Tem, City Council of Prescott, Arizona, and staff, city manager, where is the, okay. I've learned in my 14 years on the city council to never overlook the city manager. We know where the real delegation makes happen. Just a quick background, as the mayor said, been active in the community service a number of years. I was born in a little town, and there's a relevance to this, up northeast Winslow. And I stood on that corner many a days, so if it's me with the sun. But the relevance of that, went to high school there, played sports there. So in my commendation to the city council, if you sense a note of some contentious whatever, it's because in high school, we had two mortal enemies. The Winslow Bulldogs had two mortal enemies, Flagstaff Beagles and the Prescott Badgers. And the Prescott Badgers did physical damage to me all over those years, namely through Charlie Jones and Kenny Jones and the Allen Brothers. So that aside, I want to properly accommodate the city of Prescott today. As the mayor mentioned, I have the honor now of serving as the chairman of the Arizona Commission of African-American Affairs. It's a commission that is created by the state legislature. The members are appointed by the governor. Initially, came into existence under the governorship of Janet Napolitano, and we are only one of eight or nine states that has an African-American Affairs Commission. So when the activity, if you will, around legislature, Stringer, occurred, it appeared to me and my colleagues that there was a position we needed to take and something we needed to do. That was greatly, greatly enhanced from my years of service on reviewing and seeing, I saw on YouTube, the action that this city council took, the mayor and the council, and it was just really, really highly commendable to take a public stand of that sort, we just felt was very, very outstanding. So to that end, our commission did want to come and publicly share that appreciation to you. And so I have a letter. Oh, here it is. I just like to read it, but it's all right into the record. If I can adjust my arm length and my eyes. It's from the Arizona Commission of African-American Affairs. Honorable Mayor Greg, we know you've got a last name. Mayor Pro Tem Billy Orr, and members of the Prescott City Council. The Arizona Commission of African-American Affairs is a body created by the Arizona State Legislature and whose members are appointed by the governor of Arizona. Accordingly, a part of our mission is to be a resource, an advocate, and supporter of activities and actions that affect African-American citizens throughout the great state of Arizona. To that end, the recent racist and bigoted statements made by Arizona State Representative David Stringer was of immediate concern to the commission and the citizenry that we represent. Our purpose on addressing you, the mayor and city council today, is to commend and publicly express to you our appreciation on your stand on statements made by Representative Stringer. Quoting on a portion of your recent public statement, you said in the meeting that we saw, "Representative Stringer's abhorrent words do not reflect our city nor our community, and while we condemn them, that word, any word, is not strong enough to express our disdain." In closing, Mayor, we again want to commend you and the elected officials on your proactive statements about Representative Stringer. His statements clearly conflict with the very core of democracy and to the tenets of the U.S., United States Constitution, and the Constitution of Arizona. These documents clearly state, "All people are created equal and have their rights of equal treatment and representation," respectively Mel Hannah, Chairman, Arizona Commission of African-American Affairs. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Hannah.
Good evening, Mayor Greg Mengarelli.
That's perfect. Yes, you got it.
That's not the mayor.
When you called the roll earlier, you called the roll call of Councilman Good. Happy to tell you, just in case you may not know, we had a Councilman Good in Phoenix that used to live here some, I don't know, 50, 60 years ago. He was on this Phoenix City Council for 22 years. He was the longest-serving council member of the Phoenix City Council. But nevertheless, Mr. City Manager, all the council members, and to each of you, fine citizens of the city of Prescott. I have history here too, because I was told by Fred this afternoon, we were counting, I used to date a young lady that lived just a couple of blocks from here. He said 53 years ago. If any of you knew the Allen family, I see some heads nodding. Well, the oldest young, see some more heads. The oldest young lady, they almost ran me out of town because I was really bad for her. Anita, I married Anita. And it was an injustice to her, but anyway, I apologize to her now. But anyway, my name is Charles Fanyel, and I want to, with me is Ms. Constance Jackson. She is the third.
Second.
Second vice president of the state conference, and she's also the president of the Penel County Branch in NAACP. Mr. Mike Williams, he is the education chair for the state in NAACP, and he's also the third vice president. The third?
Well, you know, nothing matters after the first.
And I want to thank them for coming. Mr. Mel Hannah is my civic engagement chairperson for the state in NAACP. And I am the state conference president, serving my fourth term. Honorable Greg, I'm going to leave it at that. Mayor, city of Prescott, Arizona, and council members. Dear Mayor, on behalf of the NAACP Arizona State Conference, I am pleased to send you this communication to you, which you got in the mail, you got the official document in the mail, to you, your council members, and the citizens of Prescott, Arizona. This week, I've had the opportunity to speak with you on two occasions. Your comments were candid and sincere, and I am convinced that we, the NAACP, Arizona State Conference, has made the right decision by not calling for or endorsing a boycott of the city of Prescott, Arizona. Additionally, I want to commend you, Mayor, your council members, city manager, citizens, and organizations that took an immediate bold stance to denounce the negative racist and divisive comments made by Representative David Stringer. In our opinion, as are yours, that Mr. David Stringer is not an acceptable or ideal elected official in the Arizona House of Representatives, especially with his outspoken racist ideology and unapologetic persona and views on race relations. Therefore, it gives me great pleasure and appreciation to commend you all on your immediate stance, objections, and position taken against Representative David Stringer. We need more than ever to promote love, peace, understanding, respect, and appreciation for all cultures. As Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. said, "We should all be judged by the contents of our character and not by the color of our skin." This is respectfully submitted. Yours truly, Charles Fanyel, President of the NAACP for the state of Arizona. I want to commend you. Thank you, and it's our pleasure to be here with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any member that would like to pull something from the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to pull item B, please.
Did you say D?
B.
Oh, B, I'm sorry. Item B, anyone else? If not, we'll look for a motion to approve the others.
Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda items 8A through 8F excluding 8B.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, let's look at item 8B. Councilman Good, do you have a question on that one?
Yeah, I do. I see that this is a 90% funded, grant-funded project to clear a lot of combustible material in the Mountain Club area, and knowing that it's outside the city of Prescott boundaries, and it's also within the jurisdiction of the Central Arizona Fire and Medical Authority, I'm concerned about the city of Prescott's responsibility or acceptance of that responsibility to pay for the 10% funding match. So my question was, were the other jurisdictions asked to help participate in that cost? And what was the answer, and how did we conclude that Prescott and Prescott taxpayers should be the sole coverage of that 10% funding?
Well, the wildfire hazardous fuels reduction program's been in existence for probably a couple decades now. It's our primary funding mechanism to create defensible space around the city of Prescott specifically. Each year, the partner agencies of the U.S. Forest Service, State of Arizona Department of Forest and Fire Management, along with local cooperators and the Bureau of Land Management gather in April and September of each year to kind of strategize our big picture as to what can complement one another. In this particular grant, the 10% was made available through the general fund. It was not sought after from any of the other adjacent jurisdictions. The primary benefactor aside from Mountain Club becomes the city of Prescott. Hence, we felt it was the appropriate and wise use to continue moving forward, given the size of the grant and the complexity of the work to be done. Currently, local resources through Central Arizona Fire and Medical don't have the capacity to take on such work, and with that, that's why we've proceeded down this particular path.
So you asked them, and that was their answer?
No, sir. They have not been approached about the 10% cost share. The point of engagement has been each year during the hazardous fuels reduction that this project was identified.
I don't know. I just don't see why we shouldn't be sharing in this, especially since it's not within the city. Now, I understand that we want to protect the city and create that defensible space, and it couldn't get any closer proximity than Mountain Club to the city. But considering the responsibility and the jurisdictions in the area, I just don't understand why we can't share the cost.
Any other questions or comments from the rest of the council on this one?
Yeah, I got a comment, Mayor. Thank you. My question is, if in fact Chief Light went out to the other organizations and said, "Would you participate?", and they said, "No, we don't have the resources," or just, "No," would Prescott be any safer?
No.
Yeah, so.
To do this work, we would be in a much better position than we are currently today.
You know, I think we're being penny-wise and pound-foolish in this situation. If in fact it keeps the city of Prescott safe, and it's $9,000, I understand it's $9,000, but realistically, I think that the safety of the city is paramount.
Councilman Larsson.
Thank you very much. I agree with Councilman Shishka, and I got your name right, Shishka.
Thank you.
At the end of the day, the Mountain Club is part of the city of Prescott. It happens to be an island in the county, but the residents of the Mountain Club spend their money in the city of Prescott. It's the general fund that collects sales tax from the people that live on the peripheral of the city of Prescott. And at the end of the day, we have a responsibility to keep this city safe from fire, regardless of who else is out there. I wish we would have asked, but at the end of the day, we still have to be the leaders to take care of our citizens, and I support spending the money to take care of the city of Prescott. I don't want a fire to start up in the Mountain Club.
And moving forward, I'd offer that we most certainly will approach the other jurisdictions. It is very similar to the work that the county did out in Pinion Oaks, where citizens of Prescott were the direct benefactors of work performed by other levels of government, and that's why we lay so much into the foundation of the work in April and September to do those planning efforts.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Chief. There's a lot of collaboration and coordination between Powik, CAFMA, our fire department, and, you know, we all have each other's back. We do a lot of shared work, and so I certainly would welcome making a motion to accept item B once we're done.
I'd just like to add that I don't intend to vote against this. This is public safety, no question, and it's valuable to protect the city. I just felt that we should at least approach those jurisdictions. Each one of those members of Mountain Club pay their property taxes, and a significant amount of those property tax bill is for CAFMA protection, so there should be some expectation that their payment should cover their protection for fire-related activities. So, thank you.
Entertained a motion at this point?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept item 8B.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Okay. Before we move into the regular agenda, I want to make sure everyone's aware that there are public comment cards available. If you'd like to comment on an agenda item, please fill one of those out. You do get three minutes. Your comments are directed to the council. Any questions can be referred to staff or whoever might be appropriate. And with that, we'll go to the regular agenda, item 9A.
Public hearing on the infrastructure improvement plan and land use assumption.
Thank you, Maureen, mayor and council. We just had a workshop on this, so we're familiar with the infrastructure improvement plan. This is the public hearing to get comments from the public related to the infrastructure improvement plan and the land use assumption. I have up on the screen kind of the timeline we just saw during the workshop, but it's important to note, you know, we have the public hearing today, but council will not consider, will not adopt a final IIP or LUAA until February 26. And the impact fees will be developed from that finally adopted IIP. So with that, I would have suggested the mayor open it up to the public for comment.
Very good. Thank you, Mark. Any public comment on this item?
I don't have any speaker cards at this time.
Okay. Seeing none at this point, then we'll move on to item 9B. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, we have to make a motion, I'm sorry, to close the public hearing.
Here, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Thank you. Mr. Palladini is earning his pay today. Item 9B, please.
Public hearing on proposed increases to water and wastewater rates.
Thank you, Maureen. And mayor and council, this is the race day, which we also had a workshop on a few minutes or an hour ago, or whatever it was. I put the whole complete process for the water rates, it's obviously running at the same time as the impact fees are, but it's a different process. And as you can see, we've had a lot of public presentations. We had council workshops on the 27th. We did evening presentations on the 27th and the 4th, and then again, another workshop today. And again, the point of that is to get the information out to the community, get feedback from the council, get feedback from the community. Today, we're at the yellow line, which is the public hearing. Because of some changes in the reports and related to our Alternative 3 and other things, we're going to hold the public hearing today, but we're also going to continue it until the February 12 meeting to get more public comment, which is always good, but also to meet the statutory requirements.
Very good. Any public comment? Yeah.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. In general, I favor Alternative 3, but I have some concerns about the alternative water surcharge. I believe the alternative surcharge is covering the 20% of the Big Chino Pipeline cost that current residents have been paying since the purchase of the Big Chino Water Ranch. current residents have been paying since the purchase of the Big Chino Water Ranch. Is that correct?
You can discuss that with Mr. Woodfill afterwards.
Okay. Well, I'm going to assume it's correct. And that money was held in a separate fund, I believe. I have had discussions with past city managers about that. So it'll no longer be held in a separate fund, according to what I understood at the public hearing. I object to that, however, and mainly because it takes away from transparency. When I went back to my seat earlier, Mr. Beams was in front of me, so I asked him about it, and he told me that the Big Chino Pipeline is not in the tenure plan. But nevertheless, I believe that we do need an alternative water surcharge, because there are a lot of other things we need to be investigating when it comes to additional water supplies. Some of them would be enhanced water treatment, so that someday we could have direct potable reuse, enhanced or improved storm waters recharge, so we can take advantage of all the storm water we do get. Another thing we could do would be to sewer north Prescott, so that we could take advantage of the effluent, which we cannot do now. And we could still look for other water rates, although that's getting kind of iffy. Mr. Beams said at the 1 o'clock meeting that the outwater surcharge, and I quote what he said, was, quote, "ties the city's hands," unquote. I'm wondering what he meant by that? If he meant that, well, I don't know what he meant by that. But I think it would be really nice if we all knew, if the public knew what he meant by that. And I guess I can't ask him here what he meant by that. Okay, so, so here's something I just have to say, I've been needing to say this for a long time, and it is related to this item, because this is a public hearing and we're not getting any feedback. We used to be able to come to council and ask questions and get answers, not just for the person asking the question, but also for the public watching, and more importantly, for the press to report to the public. By not answering questions, as you used to do, you are losing an important opportunity to inform the Prescott voters and the taxpayers who elected you. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Any other public comment?
No, Mayor.
Looking for a motion here?
Mayor, I move to continue and leave open the public hearing until February 12, 2019.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Okay, let's move on to item 9C, please.
Council discussion of solid waste delivery study.
Mayor and Council, at the request of Councilman Good and followed up by Councilwoman Scholl, there was the idea of having a dialogue, an open council discussion about the feasibility of doing a solid waste service delivery analysis. So at this point, I'd probably defer to Councilman Good to discuss this a little further.
Well, my interest was in the escalating fees that are being proposed for solid waste. Currently, we're paying $15 a month for every account in the city that gets trash pickup, and the proposal is to raise that a dollar a month for five consecutive years, so we would be increasing our rates to $21 a month over that period of time by the endpoint. My calculations indicate that would add about $4 million in additional revenue to be used primarily to upgrade our fleet of trash trucks, since, as we were told during the analysis, after the economic downturn in '07 and '08, we did not really keep the fleet in the condition it needed to be kept in. So consequently, we're dealing with some really, really aged trucks that are going to have to be replaced, and we're going to use this rate to do that. If ever, we wanted to take a look at the possibility of outsourcing trash collection, now would be the time, since we're going to need to put substantial capital into getting a adequately modern and reliable fleet and using rate to pay for that. This would be the time, if ever, to really take a serious look at whether private utilization of trash collection services would be a better service for the city of Prescott. I know the rate studies have been done in the past to compare our rates to other municipalities, and I would agree, we have a very well-run division. We have great service overall. So I'm not saying that this should be done, but I think it's time to take a serious look at what the options are and what would be the best service for the city of Prescott, for our taxpayers. And that's why I thought it would be appropriate that we bring this forward for discussion and hopefully do a legitimate study to decide whether we keep it in the city or we can be better served by outsourcing this.
Councilman Blair?
Yeah, I'm not opposed to doing a legitimate study, but what does that mean when it comes to cost? I've been sitting here for a while, and we've done two of them. And both times, it did not justify the private sector to take over the services, and for a lot of different reasons. One of them had to do with our ability to transport the trash from the transfer station. Once the city is not in control of that, those costs go up a bunch for the private sector to be able to use the transfer station. That's one thing. Also, the other thing is the fact that it was brought out during those studies that the city of Prescott, with that fee that Phil mentioned, also offers tree pickup, offers solid waste pickup, offers winter time pickup, the chemicals, the harsh chemical pickups, the neighborhood cleanups, all those things are part of that overall fee. So it didn't justify the city to go out to the private sector. The second thing is, and the most biggest part, is the fact that in the private sector, here in the city of Prescott, we have two vehicles. We have a recycle and we have a trash pickup, and they're on given days. If we went to the private sector, now all of a sudden, you have six different private contractors beating the same roads every single day to pick up different trash in different communities or in different neighborhoods. So that would be the choice of the property owner. So you may very well have on one street five different haulers picking up five different cans instead of the one truck. So it puts a huge burden on our infrastructure when it comes to pavement and pavement rehabilitation. If we want to go out and see how much it costs to do this study, I'm not opposed to doing that, but in the past, it hasn't unfolded very well, and that's just showing a little bit of history for what we've done in the past.
Councilman Shiska?
Thank you. Yeah, I too have no problem with, you know, taking a look and seeing. I do think that, I was going to ask John, what is our contract with waste management? How long does that go?
I want to say it's 20-something years. You mean for the landfill?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a long, it's a long contract.
And if in fact we went private, would we still have a contract with waste management?
We would still have a contract, but I couldn't tell you right now what that would mean in terms of the city continuing to pay tipping fees. I just don't have it in front of me to be able to give you a good answer.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. My concern is that the contract would say that we would have to continue to do business, no matter whether our trash was going to, you know, a private hauler or whether it was our hauler, we would have to continue to work with that contract with waste management. And I understand that that's, you know, added partially to the cost of what we're doing. And so, you know, that would concern me, you know, unless you could alleviate that concern.
Well, I certainly can get back to council on that, but if, to the extent the city would still have an obligation to pay tipping fees, that would have to be just factored into the whole economic analysis of service models, as well as perhaps the impact on streets and those kinds of things. You can look at, you can look at the whole picture.
Certainly.
We would certainly be able to provide that if the council had to go forward and do some sort of analysis on service delivery models.
Mayor Protem?
Yes, it seems to me that we looked at this about three years ago, and anecdotally, we had some data that showed that we were certainly, our cost were right in line, even beat those of the private carrier. But anecdotally, we had lots of comments from people, or I did, who actually lived in areas where they had private service, and their service was not as good, and their streets, as you said, Steve, were really beat up by trucks, and many trucks several times throughout the week. So I, you know, I just, I think we've looked at this. Maybe we just have a report. Craig, you have something you want to share?
So this, this was one of the graphs that we had in the study that we went over. So the pink bar is proposed, our proposed rate for 2019. That shows that in, in the research that was done as part of this project, that would match what is already, what people are already paying in Dewey-Humboldt, Sedona, then you get to Yavapai County, they're paying more, all the way up through Sedona, Paradise Valley, Chino Valley, Flagstaff, Wickenburg, are all paying more than what we're proposing in this current study. Something also to keep in mind, as Councilman Blair mentioned, is the additional items, the quality of life things that our service, that the city's service includes, like here. Those, right now, if someone's in the county and they pay for that trash service, the same value that we're proposing, they get just that, that trash service for that once-a-week pickup. They don't have the separate recycle. And then we also have the household hazardous waste cleanup, the annual bulk cleanup, Christmas tree pickup, brush month for free dumping of brush to, to help with the wildland fire side of it, downtown cleanup. That's the courtesy cans downtown, but it's part of quality of life to have our downtown looking as good as it does. Neighborhood cleanups, when there's need for neighborhood projects and additional work, that's something that's, that's just part of our rates and what we cover with our service, as well as Prescott creeks cleanup, to keep our waterways nice. And then the recycle center for anyone that, from the surrounding area that wants to come and use as well. So those are additional services above that basic service.
Right, so your point would be, if you're going to do an analysis, you'd have to consider all of this extra service that maybe you don't think about when you do that study. Councilman Good?
Yeah, I mean, I've lived in four separate states and multiple communities within those states, and I've seen private service and municipal service. I've seen private service that included just about all of those additional services. So I'm not saying that it has to be all or none. There may be certain services we would want to retain. There may be services that could be outsourced. The fact that Prescott Valley allows multiple services within the same neighborhoods is not something I would necessarily recommend, but I know a lot of cities will award a contract, a citywide contract, to an individual contractor, so that certainly could be addressed appropriately. So I think it just comes down to how well do we put together an RFP if we go to that point and decide which things would make the most sense, which we probably wouldn't want to outsource. But the question is, you know, what can be done? What are the numbers? And like I said before, if we ever want to do this seriously, now would be the time. And, you know, that one graph we saw there is just comparing what we're going to be seeing this year going from 15 to 16. But if you look at where we're projecting to go, at 21, we'd be the highest on that entire graph. So I think that's why the timing is right, to take a serious look and not just compare ourselves to other municipalities, but maybe look at cities that have made that change from a municipal service to an outsourced service in a, in a manner that they found not only acceptable from the service levels, but also from the potential cost savings that might be available to the taxpayer.
Other comments from the council?
I have one, Mayor. Just going private doesn't guarantee you're going to pay less. At some point, they're going to have to replace their trucks. And so, you know, I did a study a few years ago and took a look at a Georgia town that just had three departments that were run by the city, and the rest of their departments were, were outsourced. And I looked at the budget, and the budget for the city-run operations increased by 2% that year. The budget for the private-run operations increased by 10%. So it's not a guarantee that the private is going to be ultimately less than a city-run operation, although it would be worth it to take another look at it.
Does someone have a concept of what this would cost to run the study?
Not off the top of my head, but these types of analysis are done fairly frequently. There's certainly consulting firms that can look at comparative analysis of city-provided solid waste versus outsourced or contract-out services. It's doable. We could price it out and bring it back to you guys, and if the price tag is too high, you could decide you don't want to do it, and if it's something you think is reasonable, proceed.
Councilwoman Scholl?
I think I'd like to see in that analysis also the cost of, I mean, we have a pretty significant capital investment in our solid waste department. And if we ultimately chose to outsource it, we would have to do something with that capital investment, and so that would, would be a cost to figure out what to do with that and how to, whether it's selling it or whatever. So I think that should be included in our analysis, so we have an understanding of what the cost of the transition would be, you know, in addition to what the cost of the service would be.
Councilwoman Scholl, you're dead on. It's not the kind of thing that we, you turn on a switch tomorrow and put out an RFP to outsource solid waste services. You get, there's a lot of due diligence that has to go into it, and that gets back to what the consultant's fee would be. We could, we'll just have to see. But I agree with you, if you're going to do this, you need to do this right, the analysis.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking about, is I agree with Councilman Good that with the trucks alone, you know, you're seeing some turnover, to his point, you know, there's a lot of them that need to be replaced soon. Yet there's also a lot of other infrastructure that, that's out there that we're not thinking about, that you've already invested in, that you own, and so that needs to be considered in this kind of study.
You're right, Mayor. When you establish a new community, one of the easiest things to consider outsourcing is solid waste. However, when a municipality has provided solid waste services for a period of time, it becomes much more complex to just change your model. So we can look at it, we'll look at it, and try to get our arms around what we can do in-house, but we're going to have to rely on a third party to do a comprehensive analysis.
Mayor Protem?
Well, I guess I would just like to say that we have excellent service with our solid waste, and so I guess that would be my concern. So, you know, you would want to keep the same level of what we have, which is tremendous, compared to other people that I've talked to in other municipalities. So certainly, I'm not opposed to looking at it, but usually, you do this because there's a reason. Certainly, the service we have is exceptional, so I would just caution.
Councilman Larsson?
Thank you, Mayor. I would echo Protem's comments with regards to the service we have is excellent, and I would echo Shiska down here, that it, I'm sorry, Alexa, that it would have to be comparable. You know, nothing better than waking up on a snowy morning, seeing a garbage truck with a plow, so that we can go somewhere, you know? So there's a whole lot to this, and don't forget, we invested millions, as I think you were alluding to, or you were alluding to, in a fleet maintenance facility, and we also have that that some others don't have. Well, we've already got some mechanics that work on behalf of the city to keep our fleets intact, so, you know, you have to compare oranges to oranges. And if we're going to do a study, Michael, if you're going to do a study, make sure that the study's comprehensive enough to warrant a fair comparison.
I agree with you, Councilman Larsson. Well, one other thing we do that we, Craig didn't even allude to, that we don't charge is there's a number of residents who don't have the physical capacity to bring their garbage can to the curb, and we do backdoor pickup for those folks. garbage can to the curb, and we do backdoor pickup for those folks with no additional fee. I know in the private sector, there's usually an uptick on the charge for something like that. So all those things would have to be factored into this.
Councilwoman Shaw?
I think the other thing to think about is, is in terms of kind of what this would do to the morale of our city employees. I mean, we really appreciate everything our employees do and then, you know, and they're providing a great level of customer service. And so we want to be careful about how we make them feel, about how we're, how we're appreciating what they do. And so I think that's something that you can't necessarily put a dollar figure on, but needs to be considered when, you know, when we're, when we're making a big decision like this, or thinking about making a big, big decision like this.
Councilwoman Shiska?
Thanks again, Mayor. You know, I think we all need to think about comparing ourselves to other 150-year-old cities who have the infrastructure, rather than comparing ourselves to the choice of a brand-new city to not do this. You know, I, I think that we have to compare apples to apples, and it's important that we keep things in perspective. I, I totally agree with what Alexa said. I think that we need to look at the infrastructure and the people in place that we currently have and factor the, the service portion of that into there. You know, I, I do know that when the city of Prescott does trash, they do a damn good job. So we may be paying for what we're getting. So just keep that in mind, city manager.
Good comments. I, I have a little experience with this at Prescott Unified School District. I was on the board there, and we privatized some areas of service for the district. And we saved a little bit of money doing that, and we lost relationship where, for instance, with Janitorial, now you have a company that, you know, you got an 800 number or whatever it was, and you just didn't have the relationship with that janitor who took ownership over that building. And we lost something. And I think that's something that Councilwoman Shaw's kind of touching on and others up here are touching on, is we have to be certain that we think about all those intangibles and those relationships. And, and it's hard, you can't put a dollar amount on that if you're helping somebody with their trash can to the curb or whatever those levels of service are that I know we have. We do have very good service right now. Any other comments? I'm trying to figure out what, what the mood is here.
I'm going to tell you, if the marching order is to explore the possibility of doing a solid waste service delivery analysis, I'll be glad to get some quotes and get with some consultants to see what that looks like.
I would like you to see if you could exploit cost-benefit analysis as to the actual service that we deliver. What, what is the real benefit to the community? I mean, at the end of the day, as Alexa down here was saying, as, as Shiska was down here saying, you know, there's a lot of things that our solid waste delivery people do differently than just putting out a contract to pick up garbage. So you have, I don't know why we went from oranges. You, you did it. You, you went to apples. I, I don't, I don't know why. If we've done this in the, in the past three years, if we've done this in the past five years, twice, six years maybe, but what I don't understand is why we keep beating the same horse to death when we keep coming up with the same answer, that this community, our employees buy into this community, our employees, this is their town too. I mean, it isn't like our employees are residents from someplace else. It's, you know, they take their jobs pretty serious, which is evidenced by the delivery service we get at all the levels that we have here, whether it be trash, whether it be garbage, whether it be sewer, et cetera. Look at what we have here in our quality-of-life issue. Like I said, there's nothing better than waking up some snowy morning that we didn't expect and see a trash truck out there with a snowplow on it. So I'm just sharing a wheel.
Well, Councilman, now we've had both sides of this coin. I, I probably need clear direction, is do the majority of you want to pursue this or do you not, and feel like we're okay where we are?
Here's where I have a problem. It's real simple. If we were to privatize, you got to go to the private company to get them to do something. It takes away a lot of our edge to be able to have a clean community. Where, where we're recognized as a lot of different things. And our guys go around on the plaza and empty the trash cans and do a lot of stuff, special events. We have a private company that's taken over that, and all of a sudden they have three or four call-ins sick. They don't show up. We got trash spilling on the streets. We've lost a good aspect of our quality of life in picking up a 1-800 number to call somebody. And frankly, you know, I like what Phil has to say, but that big part of me says we've done this before. If it's not broke, don't fix it. Maybe we just leave it alone.
Councilwoman Shaw?
One other thing, a couple of other things I want to mention is, you know, they provide services beyond just trash services. I mean, think about the parades when you have the trash trucks that are blocking the streets with, you know, and it's great advertising with City on the Prescott, City of Prescott on the side, and little kids get to go up and look at the trash truck and explore it. And then also, as the council liaison to the Special Events Committee, having our solid waste department there is a, is a crucial part of making sure an event flows well with trash service there on time, being picked up, it's clean. And I just don't know if we would get that same level of service, having to work with a private company. You nailed it on the head, Greg. I mean, you'd lose that level of being able to just pick up the phone and call someone and get a trash truck out right away when you have to go through a, a third party.
Mayor Protam?
Yes, you know, I, I don't think we fix something that isn't broken. We do have some privatization. It's not like we don't have any, because commercially, right? People can choose to go with, and, and a lot of those commercials stay with the city on that. And because I think they saw the relationship being better and, and the service being better. So I guess I would say, I would prefer that we have so many things to do in this city. When we have something that's work, working so well, why would we create another issue? And I, I would like for us to pass on this. You know, we, we just visited this just a few years ago.
I'd like to make a motion, Mayor, that we not perform a solid waste services delivery study.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Before we vote, we have Councilman Good. Please, go ahead.
Well, I think good public policy is always based on evidence. And we can have anecdotal reports of great things, and I'm sure we can have anecdotal reports of less than great things. But as I said before, if we're ever going to look at this legitimately, now is the time. And for my questioning of the city manager, other than comparing rates to other cities, a legitimate, in-depth look at, at a privatization relative to our service, from the best of my knowledge, has not been done.
No, we've never got to the point where we've put an RFP on the street to look at the outsourcing. And I don't know that we've looked at a comprehensive third-party analysis that's probably accurate as well. But Mark could speak to 30 some odd years of trash.
I don't know much this last three decades, but we've, we've talked about this a lot at the council level, at the staff level. And council has had this discussion before, and we've brought forward information from a staff perspective, like Craig did today, about the services we do that other communities don't get when they have outsourced services. And you guys have hit on all the points. No, we haven't ever done an actual outside consultant to do that. We've done that in, in two areas of the city, wastewater treatment and golf course. It's the only time we've ever really looked at fully going out to bid for our outsourcing. But we're wastewater, for solid waste, we've talked about it a lot. We've presented the information, we've presented the numbers, and it just never made sense to the council to direct us to go further into it. But, you know, we will do whatever the council tells us to do.
We're looking at a 30% increase in our monthly rates over the next five years. So that's a big, big increase. And there's a lot of people that that's going to be painful for them. So at least if we study this, we can have an answer to them when they say, how come our rates are so darn, all darn high? And, you know, we can say, we did a thorough study and we've looked at all the options, and, you know, this is the best decision for everyone in the community.
So Mayor, you, you have a motion and a second on the table to not do the study. And just for procedural purposes, a, an "I" vote means to not do the study, just so everybody's clear. I won't say a yes vote means no, but an "I" vote means you're affirming the motion.
Yes, a yes vote means that you would not want to proceed with any kind of study.
Correct.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, please vote. All right, let's move on to item 9D.
Adoption of resolution declaring Chapter 7-4 solid waste management as a public record and adoption of ordinance number 2019-1647, amending Title VII, Chapter 7-4, adding a severance clause and providing for penalties.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Gwen Rowich with Public Works Department. As you know, back in August of 2018, Raftellus came on board to do a rate study for the city, which included water waste water as well as solid waste rates. In November, the city posted their intent to change the fees on the city website. And in, on December 18th of 2018, we held a public workshop to get public input on the new rates that are being proposed. When we took a look at the rates, they were an integral part of Chapter 7-4 of city code. And there were a lot of other things in there that also needed to be updated to bring that part of the city code more current to the way that we operate today. Some of the changes that we put into the code that, in, in addition to the fees for residential, commercial, and dumpster roll-off and transfer station fees, include things such as maximum weights for containers, a process for missed container pickup service because that happens quite a bit, although we do provide exceptional customer service in that area. We also provided some guidelines for additional services, the things that Craig talked about, the free brush month, the bulk cleanup once a year, the household hazardous waste day. So there's some additional things in there for that. We also are going to add some fees for special events. As Alexa alluded, there are many special events that happen in the city of Prescott. Everything from car show down on Whiskey Row to the off, off-road whiskey bike race and the fair that happens out at the rodeo grounds. And our solid waste folks provide services for those events. And those things cost the city money, and they ultimately cost the, the ratepayers money. So we're going to adopt some fees for special events so that those events can pay their own way. In addition to that, some of the clarification includes things such as expansion of definitions of prohibited substances that can be dropped at the transfer station and in your trashcan, as well as giving the Public Works Director some additional authority to do things like participate in requests for bids. This last year, the Yavapai College went out and put out a request for proposals on the street, and our rates and fees are published on our website. So this would give us some opportunity to look for ways that we perhaps have some cost savings when we have large trash producers where we're in a fixed location, we're not coming back and forth multiple times, but rather picking up multiple cans on one campus. We could, we could possibly look at some cost savings and competitively bid for some of the commercial sites that are out there. So those are some of the changes that are in the amendments to Chapter 7-4, in addition to the rates that are being proposed. If it's council's desire, I can put the new rates up on the overhead or, or not. They've been on our website for 60 days.
Thank you, Gwen. Any questions, comments from the council? Okay, entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 2019-1675 and adopt ordinance.
Actually, Mayor, we need to do this separately. I'm sorry.
Do we?
Yes, please.
One at a time?
One at a time, yes. Resolution, then ordinance.
Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 2019-165.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 2019-1647.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, let's move on to item 9E, please.
Approval of municipal judge contract.
Mayor and Council, Mary Jacobson, Human Resources Director. Today I come before you seeking approval for our magistrate's two-year contract. Now, since we met last, we've got some language, a language caveat maybe our city attorney can speak to. We're going to have to clarify it a little bit.
So there, as you know, you had your review of Judge Savona this morning. And so bringing back to you two options of the contract regarding compensation, your two options, and did they have copies of the?
No, I have, I have both copies, depending on the vote.
So the, your two options are to approve a, just for the record, judge contracts have to be for two years. So that's why it's a two-year contract. So your option A is to approve a, the contract for two years, retroactive to January 1, with a, an increase of the current pay from $65,000 by, to up 3% to an annual pay of...
Just a second.
I do the math in my head, but I'm no good at math.
An increase to $68,958.
That would be your option A, a two-year contract with that increase. Your other option is to get, is to give the judge a 3% increase to that figure for this year, and then another 3% on January 1st for the second year of the contract. Those would be your two options. The reason you'd have to do it upfront, if you wanted to do that, is because, because during the term of a contract for an appointed official, you can't increase the salary midterm. So you can't do a review and you can't, it's not an elective or an option to increase during that, that two-year term for a judge. So the judge has two-year protection, but they're locked into, they could be locked into a two-year pay or salary. So that's really up to you. And I, the second figure would just be 3% on top of the first figure, whatever that number is. So if you're going to make a motion to approve the contract, I would just suggest approve the, the motion would read, move to approve contract number 2019-168, option A or option B. And then it'll be clear for the record.
Okay, Councilman Blair?
I would suggest option A. We're evaluating Glenn Savona, and I appreciate him as a judge, and giving him a 3% raise based upon previous performance, but I'm not willing to give him 6% raise when I haven't seen what his performance into the future is. So I would say two years with a 3%, item A.
Okay, Councilman Good?
What are the figures again? He's currently getting 65?
It's about $65,000 now.
Right, 3% would be 6695.
With 3%, it would bring it to 66,350 for this year. If you gave 3% this year, 3% next year, it would bring it to 68,958.
66,950 would be 3%.
Yeah, that's, I come up with 66,950 also.
66,950.
So option A would be a two-year contract, and for each year, he would receive $66,950. Or the council could do a bump for the second year of 3% on top of that, which I haven't done the math yet, but...
Right, that would be my preference.
It's 6...
Councilman Good, you mentioned that you'd like to see the 3% applied again on the second year.
Our option on the second year.
It has to be done.
But you can't do that.
Can't have the option, can't evaluate.
You have to, you have to lock in at this point, is what I understand from council.
That's correct.
Can't evaluate in between terms.
The second, the second year would be 68,958, 959. That would be the second year of the contract. So, like I said, the, the, there's a provision that prohibits the increase of an appointed official, an elected official's salary or pay during their term. And since the, since the, the judge's term is two years and not one year, you can do it upfront with sort of an escalator as part of the upfront contract, but it can't be optional. That's why we sort of presented the two options, A and B.
And I agree with Councilman Blair, just lock it in with the 3%. Option A, we could call it 66,950 for each year of the two-year contract. Any other questions, comments from the council?
I'm good with that.
So you mentioned some language, we might need that again for the motion.
It's just a motion to approve contract, yeah, contract number...
2019-168.
Option A.
Option A.
Okay, Mayor, can you make that motion?
We'll move.
Okay, we have a motion, second.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Passes seven zero.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Let's move on to item nine F, please.
Adoption of resolution establishing two sign-free zones in the city of Prescott.
Mark, can I ask you to put up the agenda item, this agenda item on page? I know the council has it in their packet, but I wanted to show you the two maps on this item. It would be page, starting on page one fifty-five on this, in this agenda. I'm sorry, I didn't print out the two maps.
Site map, the figure one?
Yes, please. There's two, there's two maps in there. So Mayor and Council, as Mark's doing this graciously for me, as we discussed at a study session a little while back, the issue that the city, the staff has had, and I know that you've had some issues or concerns about the abundance of campaign signs that go out into the community. This is a good example, I'm just kidding. So as we've talked about, you know, the city bans also temporary signs in the right-of-way. But during the election season, during election season, state law sort of trumps our, at least arguably trumps our sign ban to the extent that we can't remove those signs. So if somebody violates our code sign ban in city rights of way, the enforcement mechanism is really a, you request the campaign to remove the sign and.
That's the wrong item.
It would be item, keep going up.
F, there we go.
There it is. So there were, the, we can, we can ask them to remove the sign or we can cite the offender, but we can't, we can't physically remove, deface, alter or cover the sign. So the, but the statute also gives the city an option to create what are called tourism or commercial tourism, sign-free zones. Only, again, I would stress this time and time again, this only applies to city rights of way. So what you see in yellow here would be the city's downtown signs. And we can create up to two, no more than a cumulative three square miles. This is roughly, this is about a square mile total. And if you, if you could scroll it up, it starts at Copper Basin Road and then Whitespar is a little lollipop and then it circles around downtown over to the sixty-nine eight nine Y, which I think everybody has seen is probably one of the more problem areas. It's through downtown and then goes up to Willow Creek Road and the hospital up in the upper left corner there. For comparison, and that's Miller Valley on the, on the left-hand side, for comparison, the blue area, the blue outline is our downtown business district. The red area is the city's entertainment zone. And so this area would be, as far as city rights of way go, sign-free, meaning if, if a campaign placed a sign in the city right-of-way, it could be removed under this, if this resolution is adopted.
All the yellow.
All the yellow, but only on city rights of way. So rather than try and draw little lines for, you know, for our JS folks, we just sort of made this bubble. Now, if you go, can you go to the next page, Mark, please, or the next map? The, since we, since that was a little less than a square mile, the other discussion we had at the, at the study session was to look at the airport because that obviously is a heavy tourism area. Obviously, a lot of tourists come into town via, or from the airport, leaving the airport and drive down eighty-nine through the Dell. So this would be a strictly right-of-way eighty-nine sign-free zone or airport or Dell's sign-free zone from the air, from the, from the Deepwell Roundabout all the way to the Watson Lake Roundabout. Again, that's a very small area, square miles wide. I think our JS folks told us it was less than a quarter square mile. So cumulatively, the total is about a square mile overall. And that's, that would be our two zones. So if the council approves it, these would be sign-free, again, strictly the rights of way, you know, and, and I know that the enforcement question has come up in the past. It would still be obviously a staff responsibility, whether it's code enforcement to remove the signs. And remember, our city code allows for the manager to, to sort of deputize or appoint other staff people as code enforcement. So during these terms, they could, our streets, maintenance people could be appointed as code enforcement to remove signs or a temporary code enforcement person could be hired during, you know, part-time temporary during, during campaign season if, if code enforcement sort of overwhelmed. So those are sort of the, how you would execute on the, on this if, to enforce, either using current staff or adding probably a part-time staff person to just focus on campaign signs. And generally speaking, it's going to be during the fall campaign seasons when you're going to see the most signs. Now, we do have, you know, consolidated elections. There are, there are four other dates other than our August, November, or I'm sorry, two other dates other than August, November, but those are generally special elections and pretty limited in terms of signs. So your option today or is, you know, unless you want to, don't like the areas, if you pass the resolution, this would take effect basically immediately. And, and it would just be then on, on staff to make sure that the word gets out to the campaigns. Obviously, our next election would be our local city election. So all of, anybody who, once they file and start putting, you know, buying and posting signs, they would, we would just make sure, and I work with Maureen, to make sure that everybody knew of the rules and the maps and, and, you know, make sure that everybody's aware of it. To the extent that people follow the rules and put contact information on their signs, which is, which they're supposed to do, I think we, you know, we as a staff could make effort to contact the campaign and say, hey, we got your sign in our yard, come by and pick it up. You know, we certainly would, you know, to the extent there was an offender. There's no fine associated with it, it's just a removal opportunity to reduce kind of the clutter that I think you all saw. And again, I'm going to stress one more time, this doesn't apply to private property at all, just to city rights of way.
Right, within the yellow highlighted, if you have private property, you can still put up a sign on that private property.
Yes, that would be our land development code, which you may or may not see coming up sometime in the future, some amendments, because obviously we had some issues with it on last election, because I think many of you thought it was a little overly restrictive, but that's for another day to discuss.
Thank you very much.
I'm assuming that going south Monizuma where it's not, just, just south of the red there, south Monizuma where it makes the curve onto Whitespar, that's yellowed so that we won't have signs there?
Correct.
Okay.
That would be in the sign-free zone, that sort of stick of the lollipop for like.
All right, thank you.
Mayor Proten.
So I think this is a great idea. It was a mess last year. But my question is, so in 2020, I think it's very doable for city, but in 2020, when everybody's running, you know, presidential, congressional, county, so will this stand up then to the Arizona State Legislature?
This is allowed, this is specifically allowed, as I put in your staff report. This is expressly allowed in the legislation to, to create these commercial tourism sign-free zones because it's an aesthetics issue or a blight issue, whatever you want to call it, on areas that are heavily focused on, on, excuse me?
So this will trump, because I know last year we got a couple of calls from people at state, so you can't take my sign down.
In the sign-free zone, and I can tell you that, you know, for instance, Flagstaff has, has two zones and a number of other cities have done this. So this is expressly allowed in the statute.
It's a great idea.
So this, that's where it comes from. We're not creating anything that isn't, just in black and white in the law.
Well, we all know tourism is very important to us, so it's nice to clean some of this up. It got, it did get a little out of hand. Any other questions or comments from the council?
Mayor, we do have a speaker card.
Oh, yes, good, thank you.
Howard Mechanic.
Councilman Mayor, I think this is a good idea. This came up a couple of years ago and the city attorney commented about there's other issues that need to be addressed. I just wanted to clarify, two years ago, when restrictions were supposedly temporarily lifted, the temporary time period is over two years now, I believe. My understanding then and my understanding now is there's no limit on the number of commercial signs, and you, they can call them temporary signs. There's no limit on commercial signs on a commercial property. I could be corrected, but that's my understanding, it was my understanding two years ago when you lifted the restrictions on temporary signs. And there still exists no limit on the amount and the space of temporary signs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I can clarify, the, the council at the time adopted a moratorium on enforcement of the land development code. Again, for, this for another day, but just to clarify for everybody, that moratorium expired by its own terms at the end of, I think, December of that election year. So now the land development code is, is fully enforceable and in effect. So there are, I think, in the opinion of many people, too many restrictions on, on commercial and, and residential temporary signs. So that is probably going to come back to you all at some other point in the future. It was discussed at a planning commission meeting at, at one point, and I think it came here at a study session and it's going to get sort of, I think, brought back to life at some point in the future.
Okay, any other public comment, Maureen?
No, Mayor.
Ready for a motion here?
Mayor, I move to adopt resolution number two zero one nine dash one six two four.
Second. We have a motion and a second, please vote.
Passes seven zero.
Okay, let's move on to item nine G, please.
Approval of city contract with Mountain Bike America LLC, DBA Epic Rides LLC for the 2019-2023 whiskey off-road mountain bike events.
Afternoon, Mayor and Council. Wanted to start off by giving you a little background and a timeline on the history of this event in the city of Prescott. Starting in 2004, that was the inaugural race year, started with 200 riders and also as a one-day event. 2007, it had creeped up to 535 riders. In 2010, the city approached the event promoter about turning it into a three-day event to broaden the exposure. Again, this is a shoulder season activity that we do at the end of April every year, which kind of extended our tourism season. In 2011, it went up to 1,400 riders. In 2013, they commissioned ASU to do an economic impact report, which showed a $4.4 million economic impact at that point in time in 2013. 2015, we continued to grow with ridership. We went up to 1,900 riders in that year. And then we'll give you a little recap on what we did last year, what the event did last year for the city of Prescott. Had 1,792 riders plus 288 kids for the kids' fun ride. The estimated total economic impact was $5 million. That included state sales tax collection in the order of 195,000, county 25,000. City sales tax collection just from the event was 133,000. A few other things I wanted to point out is, over these 15 years, the marketing value to the city of Prescott's been great. As you all know, we've become quite the outdoor recreation destination. This has kind of been a help, a help in branding with that. We do get a lot of people that come for the value of the trails and outdoor recreation, which again creates spending in the community that's not related to this event, but it does certainly dovetail into what this event helps bring to us. Also, we have a pretty good amount of those folks that either return as visitors outside of the event or come and pre-ride the course prior to the event. That's pretty common, I believe. It was in the order of, in the surveys of 93% of the riders from out of the area had come previously to pre-ride the course. Lastly, on that kind of unquantitated value would be the nonprofit contribution. As an example, the Prescott Unified School District Education Foundation does run the beer garden for the event and they profited last year in the order of, I think, about 14 or 15,000, as well as an $8,000 contribution to some trail construction, actually a $16,000 contribution over two years for some trail construction that happened in the Spence Basin area, which may at some point in time become part of the course. We're looking at that to make more single track and the less, a less of the grueling part of that ride, which some of you know. So the proposal in front of us from the event promoter, in order to get us up current with some other projects or other events that he does across the country, existing, we have a $30,000 sponsorship that we provide, financial sponsorship. We provide the in-kind services that'd be police, fire, sanitation. Those costs are done by the city of Prescott. We have a staff storage area from March to May at the Gray Sparks Activity Center. By staffed, I mean, we have staff there already from eight to five, so really it's not like we're putting extra staff on, they're already there. And the reason for that is to accept deliveries, drop-offs prior to the event or maybe after the event. And we also provide the city-owned band shell for the concert and awards ceremony. In the proposed contract, the proposal would be for, and again, this is a five-year agreement. The first, the agreement, the existing agreement that we had was a rolling two-year contract. The proposed contract would be a five-year agreement with a $50 financial sponsorship, with a $2,000 annual escalator, also the in-kind services that we provide in the existing contract, meeting room for the pro-rider pre-race meeting, which is fairly inconsequential. We work with some of our downtown partners on that. That we will coordinate accommodations for 65-room nights, that's for staff mainly right around before and after the event. And that's typically been done by them, but the rooms in a lot of cases are donated by local hotels, so there's not necessarily a cost associated with that, although there could be. Just as we currently do, we would also provide the city-owned band shell, the current staffed storage area at Gray Sparks Activity Center. And then additionally, they've asked for a non-staffed storage from January to June in the order of 500 square feet, and we would do that out at the rodeo grounds in Barney, which we have plenty of capacity for that. And that would just be to store some of the things that, that would go on the, the next year. I wanted to just compare a couple of the other events that, that, you know, we go, last couple of years I've gone to Teams Conference and then the National Association of Sports Commissioners to look at bringing other events into the city of Prescott. And there, in a lot of cases, there, there's fees, host fees that are associated with that. So a few I just kind of wanted to point out that I'm aware of. The Ironman, Tempe pays $100,000 in support for that one annually, as well as about $87,000 of in-kind contribution. And in 2018, they had 3,275 participants, so not, not a whole lot larger than the number of participants we have. Worked with the Symmetra Tour, that's the Ladies Golf Association, it's sort of like the minor leagues of the LPGA. We've been speaking with them about trying to host something here at Antelope Hills. Their host fee is an annual $100,000 contribution to host that. The National Senior Games Association, and their bid has $100,000 host fee as well. And then lastly, the National Horseshoe Pitchers Association, who we haven't reached out to, but their bid packet requires a $21,000 financial contribution, a 50,000 square-foot arena, and they only had 1,063 participants last year. So we're not going there. And lastly, if you have any questions, but also I just wanted to point out that the funding is available from the transient occupancy tax. And then with that, I would happy, be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Joe. Councilman Lamerson.
Thank you, Mayor. Since it's just part of the public record, you know, when you originally started, it's not $50, it's $50,000. All right. I do have a question, though. When you talked about the give or take $4 million financial impact, is that solely in the city of Prescott or is that an impact on a regional basis? That's number one. And then number two, when you talked about the hundred and some thousand dollars for the city in sales tax, we didn't hear about the bed tax, which is significant, how much bed tax actually comes in from a tourism-targeted event in a different season than Christmas and rodeo and stuff like that, which we kind of targeted a shoulder season event that would drive tourism and, and bed tax and sales tax and fill in the restaurants and fill in the bars and all this other type of stuff. So while I understand the four million or thereabouts, whatever that number was that you gave, that was solely in the city, if I'm not mistaken?
That's correct.
And then the bed tax, which is solely meant as a tourism driver, that, that's huge because if I'm not mistaken, bed tax a whole lot more than the sales tax.
That's correct, Councilman Lamerson. I don't have the number in front of me, but I believe it created somewhere around 2,000 room nights. If that was $100 per room night, you know, it starts to add up pretty quick and then three percent of that. So certainly in addition to the sales tax generation that it did, it also accumulated a substantial amount of bed tax.
Thank you for the clarification, Joe.
Councilman Good?
Yeah, I was looking back on the fact that in February of last year, we just amended the contract for Epic Rides to include this year's whiskey off-road and next year's whiskey off-road, at which time we agreed, I won't say "we," I'll say the rest of the council agreed to the $30,000 subsidy. And I get the fact that the bed tax generated by this event is significant and substantial and covers our cost here. But to have the promoter come in before this current contract even expires and ask for a 67% increase in our subsidy with addition of a $2,000 a year escalating fee, so at the course of this contract, it'll be 93% higher than we're currently paying, plus additional accommodations that he wants, I think is not the kind of partner activity that I would feel comfortable continuing to support. I think I made the comment back in February that originally, I don't think there was an intention to have a permanent subsidy for this for-profit event. But I agree, it is substantially beneficial to the city, and we've now kind of been recognized as, you know, one of the premier, if not the premier, off-road event in the country. So we're kind of attached at the hip here, but I just think the escalating costs here are kind of unacceptable, in my opinion. To not even allow a current contract to expire before we consider an additional contract of this magnitude is not the kind of thing that I would support from a partner. So I just have a problem with that type of demand. By the way, what does coordinating 65-room nights mean?
That means we'll put out leads through our tourism department to our hotel partners, asking for some room accommodations for their event staff, and we'll get some responses back where we'll get some comp rooms. We may have to pay for some of them. That's why I said there may or may not be a cost attached with that. So that's just a lead that we send out through the tourism department.
Well, I just have a hard time accepting this kind of demand when we're not even concluding a current contract.
Councilwoman Scholl?
I understand where Councilwoman Good's coming from, but we don't have any other shoulder-season event like this that brings this amount of people to Prescott, not just once, but continuously, that produces this kind of economic impact. I mean, this is a huge event, probably one of the signature events that happens here in Prescott all year round. And so I think it's really important that we continue to partner with this group, and it's not unusual for us to be supporting this event. The other events that go along with the whiskey off-road across the nation, their communities also contribute, if that's correct, Joe?
That's correct.
And so it's not an unusual situation to be in, and so I think we would, it'd be silly to lose this partner.
Mayor Protem?
Yes, I would agree with Councilwoman Scholl. I'm glad that we're attached to Epic Rides and that they're attached to us and not another city in the state of Arizona. So it's been wonderful for our city and has brought many new residents to us as well. It's just one of those things that we're known for. And I like the way that they've moved into encouraging children to participate. And I know now, mountain bike riding has become really large in the high school and the middle school, and think a lot of that is due to the culture of the Epic Ride. So I fully support and appreciate that we have this opportunity.
Councilman Larison?
Thank you, Mayor. In principle of not really appreciating not finishing up the contract, but instead modifying the contract, in principle, I agree with Councilwoman Good on some of his comments. However, as a business decision, when I look at the magnitude of why we would modify the contract, I think it's in the best practice of business to ensure that this event that has become a major event for the city is not compromised but enhanced. So bothers me to modify the contract less than at the end, but on the other hand, if we need to modify the contract in order to ensure the event doesn't leave or that the event doesn't diminish, I support modifying the contract to include what we're being asked to do.
Other questions or comments? If not, we'll entertain a motion here.
Mayor, I move to recommend approval of city contract number 2019-169.
Second. Motion and second. Maureen, there was no public comment?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Please vote.
Passes six one.
Okay, let's move on to item nine H, please.
Mayor and Council, this is the approval of the First Amendment Development and Disposition Agreement with WSH Hospitality. Shane and Stephen Chumway are here to talk about the project. Joe Baines is going to mention some ideas he has in terms of the park element and water usage. And John Palladini is going to hit the high points of the applied economics study that I think all of you have about the economic impact, both direct and indirect. First off, I'd like to open it up to Stephen and Shane to talk a little bit more about their project.
And as they're coming up, I'm going to go ahead and read the ordinance. Adopt Ordinance Number 2019-1648, approving and amended and restated development and disposition agreement with WSH Hospitality LLC.
Good afternoon, Mayor Mangrilli, Mayor Protem Ohr, and council members. It's an honor to be with you here again this evening. We appreciate your time. Wanted to congratulate the city on, once again, making the 19 places to visit in 2019. I noticed last year that you made it in 2018. It's impressive to make it two years in a row, so congratulations.
Don't forget, we're one of the best places to live, too.
I will not forget that now, thank you.
I'm looking for a home.
Oh, good.
I see realtors in the audience.
We remain really excited about this unique project, and just wanted to take some time tonight. First, I just wanted to recap kind of the process by which we've gotten to this point. And then after that, I just wanted to cover two remaining issues, which I think would be good to cover. One is just a discussion of the value of the property and the value of the project to the public. And second, I did want to address some water usage issues as well. So with respect to process, this has been a project which involves a shared vision, not just between us and the city, but also other parties as well, including APS and Prescott College. In the city's vision and will to see this project happen has now been noticed to the public on five separate occasions. And this is now the third public hearing on this project. Contrary to any belief or assertion otherwise, this has been a process in which all sides have had a chance to voice support or concerns, as the case may be, including in the prior public hearings. As a result of this process, from our end, we have decreased the buildable height of the building. We have moved the hotel south, taking into account the park area and obelisk to the north. We have incorporated adjacent private property into the project to help facilitate not only private parking, but also public parking. We provided additional financial support for park area improvements, which remain public property, and we will incur further costs to improve public access, including to the historic bridge and trail systems. Although during these hearings, we've heard overwhelming support for the project from the community, we have nevertheless done our best to take into account the concerns voiced by some. In this third public meeting, as I mentioned, we would like to briefly focus on the issue of value and also water rights. With respect to the issue of value, we'd like to talk about that from two different perspectives. First, it's just the perspective of the value of the project to the public, and then second is the perspective of the value of the property, which is the subject of the development agreement to us. In order to understand these two perspectives, I'd like to just do a comparison. First, just bringing up the current status of the property. These were pictures which were taken recently. This is, the property is currently used as a parking lot. This is another aspect of the property. As you can see here in the background, that railroad bridge is elevated 15 feet above grade, and so it will take special work on our part in order to make that publicly accessible, not just from the west end, but also from the east end. We also hope to improve on the public restrooms in this area as well, so. This is another area. I was just reading an article written in December in the local newspaper about the Granite Creek corridor and the desire the city has to see improvements. And then this is just another shot from the other side of the railroad bridge. I know it's difficult to see in this shot, but my understanding is there used to be kind of a restaurant in here. There was a fire, it burned down. The west side of this bridge is not accessible. There is a fence which prevents access to that. So I'd just like to compare that briefly to the design intent of the project. So the different elements of this, it's not just building a hotel on city property, it's much more than that. The scope of this includes attaching this hotel to this historic railroad bridge in order to try to make it more publicly accessible and available. It includes, this is private land, which we will be using not just for hotel, private parking, but also open that up for public parking. So when there are events in this park area, right, so this park area is not part of the, we're not involved with the park area, what we, sorry, I should restate that. This, when the city creates event space in this park area, the parking over here can be used for that as well. And then other elements include trying to incorporate the Sam Hill Building into the project as conference and event spaces as well. We consider this a great idea. We think it is kind of a hidden gem of Prescott and should really become a focus of the project and hopefully a great place for conferencegoers to come. Just to highlight a couple more elements of this, so like I mentioned previously, this bridge is 15 feet above grade. Just this portion, in order to make this publicly accessible over to here, that's an additional cost to us of $250,000. And I'll talk about some of the other costs that we'll incur as well. So we have done our best to put some numbers to these costs and how they benefit the public. In order to make this project happen, as I said, the cost to purchase this private property and do the work necessary to turn it into parking is estimated at $600,000 to us. We have consistently heard the importance of this historic railroad bridge and trying to make that a real feature. Obviously, it needs to be refurbished. We'll have to take up the planks and relay it down a surface and redo some of that bridge. But as I mentioned, this portion as well, just to connect that, are additional funds expended by us that aren't part of the normal hotel project. And as I mentioned earlier, I won't pull up the, well, let me just pull up this six one. We'll be contributing additionally to some of the park area improvements. Although this park area remains public property, we'll be contributing funds to help make that happen, including this splash pad right here. So these are just some of the direct costs that we're incurring that are a benefit to the public. In addition to these substantial benefits, we anticipate that 45 permanent jobs will be created just at the hotel itself when it opens, and that the conference facilities, hotel, and other amenities will generate additional sales and bed tax, not just at the hotel, but at other businesses as well. Finally, in terms of public benefits, I would like to note that in undertaking the risk of this project, we have not asked the city for a tax rebate, we've not asked for a giblet, and we have not asked to have city development fees waived, which are a common request by developers in other parts of the state, including in large developments all over Maricopa County. What we have asked for is to take into account another perspective, which is the factors which affect the cost to build and therefore the value of the property, which is a subject of the development agreement to us. The city of Prescott was built, like a lot of cities, next to riverbeds, and this property is in a floodway. In terms of difficulty to build, a floodway is the most difficult. It goes floodway, floodplain, and then no flood zone. If we were just in a floodplain, all we'd have to do would be some specialized glazing and doors, just to flood-proof the exterior. In a floodway, what you have to do is create a no-rise situation, saying basically the development does not impact the level of floodplain. So as designed now, we have incurred, we are able to design it that way. It is a significant cost, sorry, it is a significant cost to us that we estimate right now to be $700,000 just for that portion for the foundation work. As I mentioned earlier, we're also incurring other unique costs that aren't associated with a typical development, including providing more public access to parking to that adjacent, on that adjacent private parcel. And also, in order to incorporate the Sam Hill Warehouse and the Trestle Bridge, just if we really want to do the Sam Hill right and make it a great conference amenity, our estimate is that that will cost us an additional $2 million. So we feel that we have been more than fair in doing our best to value the property from the various perspectives that are at issue. Finally, I wanted to address water usage. I wanted to just first remind that the issue of water usage in the park, the design of the park and what water is, how water is used, is ultimately up to the city, although we will work with you guys to help facilitate, because we're so close, that design process. But ultimately, that's the decision of the city. And so with respect to hotel water usage, hotel does use water, but Hilton is the industry leader in terms of water conservation and trying to be cognizant of environmental issues. I would invite anybody who has questions about the requirements which we have to meet for the Hilton brands. You can search the, a couple of things. The first is just, it's called Hilton Light Stay, and they require all of their hotels to meet the Hilton Light Stay requirements. And also Hilton partners with World Wildlife Fund and has signed on to the United Nations Water Mandate. With respect to what that means for us, we have to meet very stringent standards in terms of the fixtures which we can have in the hotel, the water flows which can come out of those fixtures, including not just faucets, toilets, but also showers, and also your housekeeping devices and things like that. We do believe we need to be good stewards. We grew up in Arizona. We're aware that Arizona doesn't have a limitless supply of water. So we do agree that we need to be good stewards. We're very excited about the project, hope that it can move forward today. And I think that these, the overall project, just incorporating the Trestle Bridge, Sam Hill, a new hotel which opens up to a great park is just a fantastic idea, and I think it's a result of a lot of work and shared vision. So, thank you.
Thank you. It was a great presentation. Michael, did you have other staff?
Joe wanted to.
Oh, yeah.
Joe wanted to talk a little bit about the park.
Yes.
Thank you. I'll be real brief. But we're excited about this. This, I think, is a great example of a public-private partnership, which will allow us to do some things and revitalize that part of the park, which we may not have taken on on our own. So this partnership enables that. It also brings in other partners, which I'm really excited about. In the event space over here, we've been talking to the farmer's market about getting them a stable location in the downtown area. They're very receptive. They're excited to be a part of this. They can stop their nomadic nature. You know, as you know now, they're down at Yavapai College during the summer, and then they transition to Prescott or to Prescott High School in the winter to find them a location, which would be in this area here, off of Granite Street, is going to be really important. Another aspect of this that I'm also excited about is tying the community garden, which exists there right now. There's only about 23 plots there, but using the community garden as a farm-to-table example, a direct farm-to-table example for the vendors at the farmer's market. Additionally, this can also be picked up, just like they do now, when they have their farmer's market on a Saturday. And a Sunday, you could have a fundraiser for Boys and Girls Club or a community concert or things like that. The playground, I'm equally excited about, again... The playground, I'm equally excited about, again, probably something we wouldn't have been able to do, or wouldn't have been at the top of our radar without this opportunity for the public-private partnership. The Shumways pointed this out already too, but I want to emphasize this again. We're just, this is conceptual at this point. Through plan review, we'll refine, you know, what does the ground cover look like? Is it grass? Is it partially grass? What is it? All those things will come out through the city's plan review, how much water use the splash pad will be, the size of the splash pad. A lot of the details will be worked out. This is purely conceptual at this point, but I'm really excited about the partnerships that it brings together with Prescott College, the farmer's market, the community garden, the Hilton Garden, the Greenways Trail that ties into it. This is an exciting opportunity to tie a lot of good community uses into one great community space, so that's all I have.
Yeah, and just one other thing real fast. Joe, I know that you mentioned this in the study session, but could you just briefly cover again the area for the homeless where you've created that space for them, for their activity?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Traditionally, in the area, just where my mouse is, right in that area as it exists, has been, they've done feeding the homeless there for a number of years. We've supported it with sanitation and the porta-john that you saw in the picture. But now, I've talked to Daniel Mattson, who's kind of headed that up about relocating it at the end of Madison Avenue. This doesn't quite take us down there, but it would be to the north here quite a bit, but on this side of the bridge, in an area where it's still accessible for them to bring in their tables, chairs, the food delivery off of Madison Avenue. Brought Daniel down there, we've looked at the area and looked at what we can do there. So, if anything, we'll improve that area as it has been traditionally used, will be relocated and enhanced from what exists today.
Thank you, Joe. Michael, anything else?
Yes, Mayor and Council, John Palladini, I think, distributed to you guys an economic impact analysis conducted by a third-party consultant that has an Arizona stellar reputation. John's gonna, I think, put up on the overhead some of the highlighted highlights of that report.
Well, actually, in order to sort of save some time, I thought, you, we got the final report yesterday. It's a firm by the name of Applied Economics who specializes in economic benefits analyses of this type of project and other commercial projects. And just so the council and the public know, this is the type of economic benefit analysis or cost-benefit analysis that the city or a party who owns land that wants to annex into the city of over 25 acres would have to do before they annex. So, this is, even though this is not an annexation, this is an infill project in a blighted area. It was determined that, based on some comments, let's do an economic benefits analysis of this project and see really what this is going to look like in the future. Mr. LaBarre, last time, and Joe mentioned it this time, this is a truly a public-private partnership. The city's a partner in this, WSH is a partner, Prescott College and APS are also sort of partners in this bigger project. And then, there's some other ancillary partners, I guess you could call them, or participants in this area that aren't even contemplated in this. So, the reason we want to do this economic analysis is to really sort of get into that. If we're going to get into the debate about, are we undervaluing the property? Because this is a public-private partnership, the city, as was mentioned, is not contributing sales tax rebates, is not doing a GIPlet to reduce property taxes, is not waiving any fees, impact or business or building permit fees. So, let's say for sake of argument, maybe this is, somebody else maybe would have paid more, but let's look at the overall economic benefits of the project. So, here's what The Economist said about this, and we got this yesterday, forwarded to you, and Maureen's going to include this report in the minutes, and we can certainly make it available to folks. "The hotel project will serve as a catalyst for the expansion of Prescott College." This is the introduction. "The impact analysis includes the economic impacts of the hotel operations as well as visitor impacts associated with the off-site spending by hotel guests at other establishments in the city. It also includes the construction impacts of related projects that will occur on adjacent parcels as a result of the new hotel, including revitalization of Granite Creek Park and Historic Railroad Trestle into a railroad-themed public recreation area, expansion of Prescott College, and costs associated with the rebuilding of the APS substation. The sale of the Sam Hill Warehouse will enable the college, this is for the college, will enable the college to purchase another adjacent 5.5 acre parcel on Grove Street from APS that includes three, let me get my glasses on, three existing buildings that can be refurbished and used by the college for classroom space, meeting space, and outdoor recreation equipment storage. The expansion will increase the college's facility space up to 50%. It will also result in additional investment by APS to rebuild the substation that's currently located on the property. In order to connect the new college site to the existing location on the other side of Grove Street, the city will build a pedestrian underpass that will complete a key part of our trail system along Granite Creek and connect the two sides of that road. These improvements, combined with the refurbishing of Granite Creek Park by the hotel developer, will open up an area that is currently underutilized and heavily fenced to allow for public recreation access." I think that's an understatement. I think we could call it blighted and be truly honest about it. So, we're looking at the overall economic impacts of the project. The proposed hotel and related visitors could have a total annual economic impact of $17.7 million on Prescott's economy, or $177.2 million over the first 10 years of operation. So, we'll let that sink in a little bit. It's a substantial economic project for the city. The project could directly and indirectly support over 200 jobs and $5.4 million in annual payroll, including jobs and payroll at the hotel, as well as jobs created at other businesses that benefit. As mentioned, the hotel would employ approximately 45 people with an estimated payroll of about a million dollars a year, and a direct annual economic impact of $5.2 million. The hotel would make local supplier purchases that would support additional indirect economic activity. Hotel employees would spend a portion of their income locally, creating induced impacts of local businesses. The new demand created by supplier purchases and employee spending could result in induced economic impacts of almost $2 million a year, supporting another 18 jobs. In addition, guests to the hotel would spend money in the community and retail restaurants, entertainment, annual off-site visitor spending in Prescott is estimated at $7.1 million. This spending could create an annual impact of $10.5 million in addition to the impacts of the hotel. Construction, the estimated cost for the hotel conference center at around $24 million. Then, there's an additional $6.1 million for Prescott College expansion and the APS substation, so it's over $30 million. The construction activity alone could generate a one-time economic impact of 41, over $41 million in the city, supporting about 340 jobs, and $14.5 million in labor income. Local and indirect taxes, including taxes from employees and visitors, could result in approximately $5.3 million in additional revenues to the city during the next 10 years. It's $5.3 million in taxes to the city. Construction, I think we mentioned, alone, I want to get into, I'm going to get into visitor impacts, I think we've talked about construction. According to the Arizona Office of Tourism, the average visitor to Yavapai County spends about $242 per day on lodging, retail restaurants, entertainment, and local transportation. For the purposes of this analysis, it was assumed that 100% of the off-site food and beverage expenditures could be captured by Prescott or in Prescott, along with 75% of entertainment expenditures and retail expenditures. The result resulted in average per person per day spending of $94 onsite and $128 offsite. These visitors could also spend $7.1 million per year offsite at other local retail restaurant, transportation, and entertainment establishments in Prescott. The combined, I think we got that number, I want to go into the revenues real quickly. So, in addition to the jobs, in addition to the indirect benefits of all these projects, this is the estimated revenue by The Economist. In addition to supporting jobs and output at related businesses in the city through multiplier effects, the project would also result in increased local tax revenues. The hotel could directly generate approximately $280,000 to $330,000 per year in sales, lodging, and property taxes to the city, plus the lease revenues or the one-time purchase proceeds. There would be an additional indirect tax revenues from employees and from visitor spending, estimated at $160,000 to $180,000 per year, resulting in a total annual revenue impact of approximately $460,000 to $520,000 a year, or 10-year total of $5.3 million. So, I guess focusing on, if we get into the debate about whether the city is undervaluing the property, even that undervalued amount is to be looked at as an investment in a $17 million per year return, or $170 million over 10 years, and certainly, I'll turn to these guys, they're not going to be done in 10 years. So, where do we go, you know, where do we go from there? And so, The Economist, kind of, their practice is look at a 10-year, they give it a 10-year look, and so that's why we looked at the 10 years. The other thing I want to point out, in, to conclude, and is that this property is city-owned, doesn't generate any property tax. Once the improvements go in, those, even though, under the lease, the dirt doesn't generate property tax, but the improvements do. So, you're looking at property taxes for school, for, you know, the city has a small property tax, the county, college district, you know, so it's going to generate revenue in, for, which isn't even included in this report, but generate property tax revenue for other, you know, government services like schools and the county and the college that it's not addressing now. So, the overall conclusion, I think, and you can read, I gave it to you, you can read it for yourself, is this is a good investment, even if it's undervalued, as some people might say. And I'll just make a final comment, that state law, state statute, and the case law makes it very clear that the city has the authority to expend funds for economic development purposes. So, instead of expending $100,000, $200,000, $500,000, instead of writing a check, again, assuming the argument that this property is undervalued, we're taking, our investment is basically the land and investing, that's not producing anything other than blights and porta-potties, it's not, it's producing really nothing, and it's creating huge opportunities, 340 jobs, you know, 45 permanent hotel jobs, 340 total jobs, huge, you know, revenues for income. So, I guess I'll just conclude by saying, it's a business question for you, you know, even if you assume the argument that the city's undervalued, whether this business investment has the right return that you're looking for. Also, finally, the red line of the development agreements in your packet, happy to answer any questions you have on that, and I'll go sit down.
Impressive numbers, John, thank you. I think you just used a sledgehammer to kill a gnat. Michael, anything else in the presentation?
No, I would like to thank everybody involved in this. It's been a tremendous amount of work, but I think getting this project and bringing it to fruition is going to pay dividends to this community for generations to come.
Yep, I would agree. I'd like to open it up to the council. Before I do that, I'd like to thank Stephen and Shane Shumway for your persistence and diligence on this project. Had a lot of moving parts, a lot of great partnerships that did come together. I want to thank you for your investment in our city. It's been over 20 years since Prescott has seen this kind of investment, this size of investment, this size of project in our downtown area. So, thank you for believing in Prescott. We all do here, and I'm glad you share that vision. I think you've done a tremendous job addressing all of the concerns that have been brought before us in these public comment periods, and I appreciate your diligence on that. In the weeds a little bit, so to speak, I want to talk about the green space a little bit. There have been some comments regarding, you know, all the green that we see, and I realize these are renderings and we haven't, Joe hasn't really put pencil to paper on exactly what those turf areas, green spaces will look like, but I can tell you from where I sit that we penalize people for using lots of water intentionally, which deters them from having grass in their backyard, or front yard as it may be. Furthermore, we give them incentive to pull that turf up and put down artificial turf. So, we give our citizens every reason not to have grass at their place. So, I think it makes a whole lot of sense to me that in these public spaces, we'd have lots of space for our families and our individuals to come and throw a frisbee, have a picnic, and enjoy those grassy areas in this park. Furthermore, we're a city without a public pool. There are municipalities that do maintain public pools. I think it's very expensive, and there's a lot of water involved with the pool. In this case, we have an opportunity to provide spaces for families and young people, and maybe old people for that matter, I don't, Mr. Lamerson might want to get out there. But to have a splash pad that is so efficient compared to a pool, I think just makes a whole lot of sense, and it really actually talks or speaks to our conservation efforts, that we would choose to do that kind of thing and offer that to the public. So, those are my thoughts on a couple of things down in the grassy, weedy areas. Let's go ahead and go to a comment from the council, Councilman Good.
Well, I agree with you, Mayor. As my original comments for this project, I still hold this is going to be a very great project for the city, very valuable. It'll anchor all of our efforts in upgrading that Granite Creek Parkway area. And even considering maybe not getting the absolute highest original cost or lease fees, when you amortize this over the course of the lease and the benefits of economic development and activity within the city, any variations in that number probably will pretty much disappear over that period of time. However, one objection that I made before, and I see that has not been addressed, is this clause in here that says, "No water demand analysis is required for the project, and the project is not subject to further review and approval for a water management policy over the entire course of this lease," which is 50 years, with an option for a 30-year extension. Now, who the heck can project what's going to happen 80 years from now and what the impact of water usage could possibly be? I still think a reasonable review periodically of water use and water management for the project is very reasonable. So, I'm just kind of flummoxed about why we haven't had some willingness to at least address this issue over potentially an 80-year period of time. City manager, or Shumways?
Well, you know, one of the things that I can comment on, and you're going to see it in some analysis that you're going to see in the not-so-short future about water, the city has done a wonderful job with its water portfolio. It's actually over-allocated water to projects, both commercial and residential. And I think that allowing the Shumways to put in the water conservation measures that they referenced, and having some faith that they're going to do it the right way, and giving them the allocation that they need, but not over-allocate, is actually a good policy decision. I don't want to put words in Stephen and Shane's mouth, and I'll turn it over to them. I don't think it's in their best interest to be anything but good stewards of the water.
That's exactly right. I mean, we have an incentive to conserve water as well. One of the reasons that language is in there is Hilton's requirements for us are more stringent than our current understanding of what the city of Prescott's requirements would be. So, the reason that clause in there, to add another layer of, well, do an analysis and, you know, a water impact analysis and things, for us just adds another thing that says, well, go pay to do this analysis when it just already turns out that we're already meeting a more stringent standard. So, that's our perspective on it.
Well, my concern is, let's face facts, you, me, and everybody in this room is not going to be around when this lease expires, or when they're subject to expiration. So... So, even though I have a lot of confidence in your willingness to manage your water well, you know, what happens with future operators who may not be as publicly conscientious about it? That's why I think, at least I'm not asking for a costly analysis, but at least, that's one of the things that we do for residential customers now. We just discussed this at our last meeting, where we're allocating a certain amount of water, and then we'll watch to see how well it's used, and we may reduce the allocation if it's used well. Some review of that nature, where we could just take a look, maybe every 10 years, and see how the water is being used at the project, and if it's not being used well, we might be able to have some ability to reduce that use, and if it's being used well, then terrific, and renew it for another 10-year period. Something of that nature, I think, is just very reasonable.
Councilman Lamerson?
Thank you, Mayor. Number one, thank you to the Shumways for bringing a project to Prescott. I also think it's important for us to work with our existing infrastructure, and that includes our cultural infrastructure, and such institutions like Prescott College, that are absolutely positively positive partners in the city of Prescott. You know, the idea that the bed tax was passed by the citizens of this community for tourism promotion and/or parks and recreation, well, tourism promotion includes a lot of things, and councils to councils have decided some of that might include police, fire, some of the basic services that are necessary for this community to be both safe and healthy. And since bed tax is subject for both, it's not just about going out and doing advertising. From time to time, we've had to use bed tax money for street sweepers and all kinds of different things that we could justify through the legal department as being promotion of tourism, when you have a neat and clean and organized community, et cetera. I think the under-evaluation, so to speak, has been terribly overstated. The value of that property has a whole lot more to do with than just a monetary presence. It has to do with all the bedrooms that are going to be brought in, all the bed tax that's going to be brought in, all the sales tax that's going to be brought in, all the jobs that's going to be created, all the ancillary benefits to the restaurants, the hotels, the various entities that make the quality of life in this community. I think this is a wonderful project coming into the city of Prescott, and I would hate to think that we would be short-sighted on not saying thank you for bringing this project forward, and working with us on trying to come up with what, and I appreciate Hilton, okay? And I know that Hilton has high standards, and I appreciate you saying that the standards they require you to is far greater than ours. So, I think that pretty well covers some things. And, Michael, thank you and your staff for doing this. John, you did a pretty good job, but I would stick the law earring, you know, instead of reading.
Mayor Protem?
Yes, I just want to take just a few minutes and say thank you to the Shumways, and I wish Dr. Philco was here to say thank you to him as well, and Darrell Sia from APS, and this makes wonderful financial sense, but this makes really good community sense. This park and what's going to happen here is going to be such a gift to our city, and it will be a wonderful legacy, and so I'm very happy to be sitting on this council that's going to get this done. So thank you very much.
Councilman Blair?
Thank you, Shumways. Mind, probably three, four of their properties are excellent properties, and again, I sit here and I don't want to sound like Elizabeth Ruffner, but it's time for a history lesson. And this community was chastised for a development agreement, economic agreement with Costco. It's the gift that keeps on giving. Jobs, taxes, all you can imagine. 2006, Red Development, Trader Joe's, city of Prescott, mildly chastised for being the financial backbone in a tough economic situation. We got our money back, we got our interests back, we had a gift that keeps on giving in a community that was demanding these things. And as I look at this project, and you start talking about sales tax, property tax, bed tax, job revenues, quality of life issues, how could you look backwards at something so spectacular for this community? I support it 100%.
Thank you, Councilman Blair, thanks for the historical perspective. Any other council comment, question? I would just ask, as we go to public comment, we've had this in front of the public twice before, so just my personal preference here, I'm asking that you come with something new. We've heard some comments repeatedly, and I appreciate that, but if you have some new comment, that would be tremendous, and we'll open it up at this point.
Jan Bryan?
Good afternoon, council members, mayor, and citizens of Prescott. My name is Jan Bryan, and I've worked in finance for 35 years, 28 of those as a certified financial planner, and an accredited investment fiduciary. When I read the $300,000 price tag for the proposed property some months ago, I thought it was a typo, but, and I was alarmed to learn it was not. I don't know if the city of Prescott has a fiduciary duty to act in the best interests of its citizens. Fiduciary means that you have the highest standard of duty to manage the assets that you control on behalf of others. But it might be a good idea to exercise some fiduciary duty and fiduciary procedures. It's always about process. How was the process carried out, and can you document a prudent process? Due diligence and reasonable care. Wasn't independent, third-party appraisal done on this property? I don't know. And usually, several are obtained, and an average of those are utilized. Every deal starts with evaluation of an asset, at least in my world, so that's what I would have started with. Were any and all conflicts of interest disclosed? If my client brought to me a deal like this to evaluate, my view wouldn't be positive. The $15,000 per year lease price is $1,250 a month. A person would be hard-pressed to find a small apartment in downtown Prescott to rent for $1,250 a month. And the lease agreement allows the developer to utilize an additional two acres of property beyond the 1.9 acres for the hotel. I've heard a lot of it could, it could, it could, and I've heard some trust us, and we've seen other situations where trust us, and I point you to the Lowe's scar for one. So I think more attention and due diligence should be done on this project. These are all low-wage jobs coming in. They're housekeeping jobs, and 45 jobs at $1 million is $22,000 per year. So, I recognize that, and I love public-private partnerships, don't get me wrong. So, one of the development agreements, section 6.4, provides that the lesser agrees to issue to less see encroachment permits and easements over any portions of contiguous parcels to the property owned by the lesser, which are beneficial for the project and its use, including for vehicular access, pedestrian access, architectural elements, overhead awnings, shading, valley parking stations, portico chairs, who knew, subterranean foundations, lateral support systems, and outdoor dining. Any permits and easements granted pursuant to this section will run with the title to the property.
If you could wrap your comments up.
Okay. Thank you so much for listening to me. I just think there are two components that require more due diligence, and this is, I beg to differ that this is a blight area. I think this is a jewel in the real estate portfolio of Prescott, and on its face.
Thank you for your comments, thank you.
Thank you.
Leslie Hoy?
And do you know where Conrad Hilton was born?
That's enough, thank you.
San Antonio, New Mexico.
Hello again, and yes, I'm going to talk about water, sorry, favorite topic, can't help myself. I had some prepared remarks, but I have to alter these, and I'm not that good at it, so I'm going to do the best I can. First of all, I want to thank the Shumways, and Joe Baines, and everybody else who has chosen to discuss water, and obviously listen to the comments about water from the public, and that's perfect. However, there's still some questions that remain. And yes, Mayor Mangarelli, I think that it's good to have some parks. In fact, Prescott has a shortage of parks, but the parks don't all have to have all that much grass. Okay, in the development agreement, and Councilman Good spoke to this, it says that all the costs associated with landscaping the park are at the sole cost and expense of the city. So I hope that the public can be involved in the review of the plans, or at least be informed of the plans before they happen, so they'll know what's happening with our water. I'm, I have a big problem with the water demand analysis, forbidden some future water demand analysis, or any water demand analysis being written into the development agreement. Why can't it just be left out? I mean, why do we have to have that in there? Then, I need to remind everyone that the city is us. It's we, the taxpayers, it's we, the voters, so you should never forget that. That's a really important concept, and that means that, yes, you need to listen to us. At every opportunity, city officials congratulate us Prescott voters and taxpayers on reducing our water use over the last 15 years, and we deserve that credit. My husband and I have reduced our own water use by 20% or more during that time. So, when the 3D display shows all that grass, that we are going to irrigate with our precious drinking water, and the development agreement states that no water demand analysis is required, and the project is not subject to further review and approval for a water management policy, we Prescott taxpayers, who have greatly reduced our water demand, deserve an explanation, so I was glad to hear some explanation. But there's a couple of big questions that still remain, and I know you're not going to answer them. What discussions with the Shumways led to writing into the development agreement that no water demand analysis is required? They said they didn't want to bother with it, they're already doing all this stuff with Hilton, and blah, blah, but that is not a good reason for the city to accept that. I'd like to know what the city's side of that was, and I'm going to finish. Has anyone, has anyone estimated how much water the project will use, both indoors and out? Where in our water portfolio that water will come from, and what the impact will be on our aquifer overdraft? Whether it's in the development agreement or not, seeing water policy would require that we do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie.
Howard Mechanic?
Your mom probably told you that two wrongs don't make a right, so what do 11 wrongs make? A train wreck, and this project is a train wreck, and here's why. First, the city says the value of the property is $300,000. That's wrong. The value is about five times that. Second, the city says a monthly rental of $1,250 is fair. That's just a fraction of a reasonable rental rate. Third, you're allowing Hilton special uses on the adjoining parkland with no additional rent. Fourth, the city says this huge gift to WSH can be offset by expected sales and bed taxes. Wrong. In Turkin versus Gordon, the Arizona Supreme Court ruled that taxes cannot be viewed as consideration to offset a gift. Fifth, at the August meeting, the city attorney said you were just getting the ball rolling, and that the future council votes would be required to approve the project. Wrong. The August contract is a done deal, and no real actions are required from the city, including today's. Sixth, specifically, the city attorney said that if the developer didn't get approval for a height of 70 feet from planning and zoning and council, the deal would be dead, because the deal wouldn't pencil out for the developer at 55 feet. Obviously wrong. Seventh, we were told this would be a great location for farmer's market and splash pad. Wrong. There's no reasonable parking in that area. Look. Eighth, you want the public to pay for 33% of the cost to refurbish the railroad bridge to connect the second floor of the hotel to their private conference center across the street. That's wrong. Ninth, we were told in August that this deal did not require bidding. Wrong. Our city charter requires bidding for the sale of real property. Tenth, in November, you said you'd conduct a competitive bidding process. Wrong. You conducted a sham bidding process. 11 is the water issue that people have talked about. The ball did not start rolling in August. The only thing that's been rolled is the public, and possibly some council members. That's who's been rolled. The only way to save the public and the city from this train wreck is for a civic-minded resident to file a suit declaring this deal invalid, because it includes a huge unconstitutional gift, and also because it was not the result of a valid bidding process. The developers stated at the last meeting that the city of Prescott has been the best city they've ever dealt with. Considering you have been throwing money at them ever since they walked in the door, I can understand their feeling.
John Wolfinger?
So, I think the story we tell ourselves shapes the facts and opinions that we pull in, and it's clear there's a couple camps on this. We can tell ourselves the story that this is a sham, this property is underpriced, et cetera, and throw the facts and opinions that we want around that, or we can tell ourselves that these councilmen and women were elected to look out for the best interests of the city, and that the city manager, city attorney, and the Shumways have done their due diligence to do that. It's the story we tell ourselves. As a second-generation Prescottonian, a pastor in this city for the last 10 years, what I see is responsible development that's good for the city, that's good for the private-public partnership, and the downtown historical district as a whole. As Prescott grows, I believe its citizens and leadership desire advancement and progress that is responsible, beneficial, and fits within the historical uniqueness of our city. And so I'm thankful that the mayor, city staff, and council, and the Shumway group have worked hard together to create a project that is good for business, good for families in the Prescott area, as it meets both the needs now and has foresight for the years to come. I believe they've done the work to build the bridges with other businesses downtown, including myself and others, and I look forward to the continued advancement of the common good for both the residents and visitors alike. Thank you all for your work and partnership.
Thank you, Pastor.
Leland Moreno-Hilburn?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. Thank you for your time and allowing me to speak on this subject. My name is Leland Moreno-Hilburn. I'm the director and general manager for the Aviation Aircraft Corporation, a corporation which has newly chosen to locate here in Prescott. And one of the fundamental reasons for that is, as this corporation has viewed Prescott, it has viewed its leadership as one that would act on behalf of its citizens, to be good stewards of the natural and civic resources that this community has to offer. And you have continuously demonstrated the improved quality of life, and the overreach in support of the prosperity of businesses that would choose to locate here, and this has continued to contribute to the benefit of us all. We champion you in the decision to take up this public-private partnership, in which will largely be a private enterprise. one that we, as a community, can leverage in support of enhancing our heritage, preserving that heritage, and revitalizing the areas in which this is the subject of. This is a unique initiative, which will prove as a model and a gateway for future similar-type public-private initiatives that will continue to revitalize our town, and your leadership will have been proven to have provided a legacy in that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Leland.
Cecilia Jernigan?
Hello, my name is Cecilia Jernigan, and mayor, city council, staff. I spoke last week, because I had been in the hotel industry for 40 years. For 10 of those years, I traveled around the country, opening up new hotels. And I can tell you, when we went into a city and it had a Hilton in there, we knew we were going to have a tough job. They're a good franchise, a good company, and I just wanted to say thank you to everybody in the Shumways. I want to thank the city council, Joe Baines, the Prescott College APS. Michael, I know you've worked very hard on this, and I'm just saying that this is something that is just going to be amazing for the downtown. Thank you all for your hard work.
Thank you, Cecilia.
Connie, can you tell me?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. I wanted to come back once again, just to confirm and reiterate my support of this project, as not only myself, but also my neighbors. I'm very involved in the downtown area. I not only live down here, I pay taxes down here, and I have several businesses down here. And I wanted to add to John Palladini's comments. The one thing you forgot is, are the people, the residents down here, how that's going to affect us? There's going to be so many positive things that will come out of that. Anybody that can say that that area is not blighted doesn't have their glasses on, because that area is a very blighted area. And although that park is beautiful, many of us can't use that park, because it is just not safe, as evidenced by the syringes and the garbage that's down there, and the people sleeping there overnight. I wouldn't let any of my children go down there. I do want to read this real quick, and I'm going to be very, very fast, I promise. Let's see here. "As I communicated in the last study session, this project is much more than just a new hotel. This project represents a vote of confidence to the city manager, Michael Lamar, and those of you who have chosen to advance this city and not hold us back with the antiquated thought that if we ignore our city, our infrastructure, and the fact that we are growing, Prescott will somehow survive and prosper. Prosperity can happen only one way, through good leadership, a vision for the future, and a plan for proactively managing this growth that will inevitably come, it's coming here and we have to get on board, and we've got to stay ahead of it. A plan that includes supporting the businesses and protecting the investments of our residents and business owners, that's a big thing. That's right, this project represents much more. Not to mention the fact that this will beautify and enhance that area of our city. It'll contribute to our tax base and give our city residents and visitors an additional place to enjoy with our children, and in my case, my grandchildren, all the while not detracting from our beautiful but overused Courthouse Plaza. This will act as an extension of our city core to be used by all. As I said before, the naysayers will come, and they were here today, but keep your eye on the ball. This is about the future of Prescott as a whole, not the emotional outcry of a few people who don't like change, nor do they understand the bigger picture, I think they're ignoring that. I thank you again for your courage and vision to move us forward. Please vote for this project, and encourage the investor to keep his money here in the city. Thanks again."
Thank you, Connie.
I don't have any more.
Okay, any other comment from the council at this point? Entertain a motion?
Mayor, just one real quick correction on the development agreement. On page 36 of the proposed amendment, it's Exhibit E, and it has to deal with stormwater discharge. The section should read that, and this is a last-minute correction, the parties agree that there are no retention or detention requirements for the property. That's a, we're taking away the, removing the references to stormwater quality or first-flush treatment requirements, so it's strictly a no-retention-detention. So if there's a motion to approve, just to reference that in the motion. Exhibit E.
Okay, we can do that? Entertain a motion?
So Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 2019-1648 with the amendment E.
We have a motion and a second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, thank you. Let's move on to item 9I, please.
Awarded City Contract to Waterworks Engineers LLC for Engineering and Design Services. And also awarded City Contract to Fan Environmental Fan Contracting Joint Venture for C-MAR Services for the Water Production Facility and Intermediate Pump Station Project.
It's always good to see Eric Bay, especially at the end of a long meeting. Someone who's very excited about his water and sewer systems. Thank you, Eric, for being here today.
Thank you. Yeah, Mark is telling me that the Elmo's booting up right now. I do have a graphic to go along with this presentation.
How graphic?
Oh, very graphic. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Eric Bay with Public Works. This next item is for the design and the pre-construction C-MAR services in conjunction with the water production and intermediate pump station project. So I know council has commended me in the past for the brevity of my presentations, and I promise that I will stick to just the important facts today, but the presentation will be a little bit longer, because this project is complex, and I want to let you know all the major details. So, long story short, this project will rebuild our water production facility out in Chino Valley, and will construct a new intermediate pump station facility to help water operations efficiently deliver water to the city, the expanding and growing city of Prescott. So, let's start with the water production facility. I was going to reference the graphic, oh, it looks like we have it up.
Okay, we can look over here.
And it's coming up behind you as well. So, let's start with the water production facility. This is the backbone of the city of Prescott. Prescott as we know it could not exist today without the water production facility. The facility accepts water from the five wells that we have out in our Chino Well Field, and then it boosts it 13 miles and 850 feet in elevation up to the North Tank Site, which is at the intersection of Douglas Avenue and Willow Creek Road. From there, it's distributed to more or less the rest of the city. The existing facility was originally built circa 1940s, and some of the equipment that's in that facility originally is still functioning for us today. So it's a very aged facility. The new water production facility will be constructed near the old one and will work in harmony with the new intermediate production facility to create a whole bunch of advantages for water efficiency, water operations, a better pumping solution in general. So, next is the intermediate pump station site. And the reason that I say "site" on this one is, it's not just the intermediate pump station, it's the intermediate pump station, it'll be our Zone 110 pump station. It's also going to be the location of two 5-million-gallon storage tanks, as well as a footprint for a third 5-million-gallon storage tank once the model and demands require that we install the third tank. So, why is the intermediate pump station so important? I'm going to highlight four reasons. The first of the four reasons will be pumping efficiencies. Water is heavy. Moving it uphill requires electricity, and plenty of it. This is something that water operations is very mindful about. Right now, the water in Prescott's down here, Prescott is up here, and we pump from down here up here to serve the population base up here. Currently, much of the growth that Prescott is experiencing is not here or here, but about here in elevation. So the intermediate station will be installed in this middle elevation, so we can pump to where we need the water and distribute it from there. We're lucky to have this concept, because otherwise, we would have to pump from down here up here, and then we would have to strip off that pressure to serve the population right here where the growth is being experienced. And that strip of pressure, in my eyes, is just a waste of money, because we spent that money on electricity to get the water from here up to here. So pumping efficiency is the, kind of, the first key to this. Operational efficiency is another one that's very important to us. Lifting water 850 feet in elevation in a single lift is, it has operational challenges. The PSI static at the Chino facility right now is just shy of 400 PSI. When we're pumping, it can get well above 400 PSI. It's going to be an inherent benefit to our transmission mains when we install this intermediate station by reducing the pressure in that line by nearly half at the production facility, and then as it makes its way up more than that percentage-wise. A third key to this project will be redundancy in our water system. Currently, we do have some supplemental production capabilities in Zone 12. The intermediate storage tanks will be able to hydraulically accept water from that zone, and then we can use that water to supplement that water into the city zone, which is something that we can only do on a very limited basis today. This redundancy is something that water operations has a very close eye on, because heaven forbid if something were to happen in Chino or to that transmission main, that severely limits our ability to provide water. So redundancy is big in our eyes. And then reliability. Like I mentioned, the equipment down there, it's aged. New pumps, modern equipment, it's going to be more efficient than what we're working with today. And, for example, we had a booster pump just about a month ago go out, our Booster 5. It's in need of repair. It's an aged piece of equipment. So, this will bring everything down at the production facility up to date, as well as new equipment at the intermediate site.
Is the intermediate site at the airport?
Yes, and on the graphic here, I was going to point that out right off the bat, but you can see that the water production facility is up here in Chino, and then the intermediate production, intermediate pump station site is just west of the airport location.
The reason why I bring it up is, most, a lot of people don't know that, and with the tanks we have at Chino Valley, you're talking about putting in two more at the intermediate site, plus a third, which brings our capacity five-fold, opposed to what we used to have with just one tank. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah. So, to recap, pumping efficiencies, operational efficiencies, redundancy, and reliability, these are the highlights. We have several other benefits that are going to be built into the project as we go through the design steps. It's important to note that we chose to approach this project using a construction manager-at-risk delivery method. The C-MAR method has many benefits for a large and complex project such as this, and it kind of removes some of the struggles that can be inherent with a low-bid project. It allows the contractor to come to the table early, and they will provide cost modeling and constructibility review in conjunction with design reviews to kind of help develop a better, more constructible project. The C-MAR approach was recently used by the city for the airport water reclamation facility, because I can't give the presentation to council without talking about sewage, and it went very well. So we hope to have similar success on the potable water side of things with the C-MAR approach. As far as costs go, we have a high-level estimate of 20 to 25 million for all of these improvements. As I mentioned, these are the backbone components of our system. This number will be refined as we continue forward with design. Let's see. And what this doesn't mean is, in a year from now, I'm not going to come back to council with a $20 million council memo. What it does mean is, as we progress through design, and as the contractor gets started with site improvements or the electrical bid package, I will be coming back to council with GMPs to accomplish these tasks as the design moves forward. So you can get familiar with me standing at this podium talking to you about the water production facility project.
GMP?
Guaranteed maximum price. My apologies. And also, now that I've provided a pretty good explanation of this project and everything that it entails, hopefully all the subsequent GMP presentations can be more brief. Both the design firm and the C-MAR contractor were selected through submittal of statement of qualifications and a round of in-person interviews. So the city team is very comfortable with the project team that we have in place. We've spent a significant amount of time revealing and negotiating the scope and fee with both the C-MAR contractor and the design engineer, so we're comfortable on that front. Everything's in order, we're ready to get moving. And with that, I'll take any questions that you may have about the project.
Thank you, Mr. Bay. Councilman Lamerson?
Thank you very much. I truly appreciate your delicate nature of the way you handled your descriptions and stuff on moving that stuff. I mean, you were less than graphic, you really had me nervous for a minute.
Councilman Good?
It seems to me like this facility is pretty essential to handle the growth in the Deepwell, Arizona Eco, Walden developments overall, in addition to what might future be planned for the north part of Prescott, is that correct?
Yes.
And you're going to see some significant savings in the amount of energy that's needed to push this water up to where it currently is needed, and then you were saying either strip it off or gravitationally bring it back down to that area. Do you have an idea of how much savings is going to be generated from having this intermediate facility?
So I don't have an exact value on the savings that it will generate. I did look into electrical costs briefly before this council meeting, and I can tell you that we budget 1.7 to 1.8-ish annually for our electrical costs. And that's out of a roughly 4.8 total operating budget for water operations.
This is not going to pay for itself based upon energy cost savings, but the fact that this is where all of our future growth is likely to be concentrated, we just need to have this ability to service this growing area with more efficient delivery of water.
Exactly. We will need to deliver water to this area eventually. One of the primary booster stations that will service the site will be the Zone 110 booster station that I mentioned, will be at the intermediate pump station site. Currently, the demand in that zone is zero. There are no houses, there are no residents, there's nothing out there for us to pump water to. So this will be a new zone for us, and it needs to happen. So, as long as we're making it happen, we're making it happen as efficiently as possible, while at the same time creating a site that's going to be more reliable for the city as a whole when delivering still the majority of the water up to Prescott proper, or Prescott, South Prescott, not the new growth area.
Thanks.
An instantaneous benefit of the intermediate pump station also, though, as Eric mentioned, the Zone 110, we're looking at the area of Olive Pinion Oaks, Emery Riddle, potentially Dr. Askari's area, all of that. Currently, any water that's used in that area, it gets pumped all the way to Willow Creek and Douglas, and then we strip the pressure back off before one drop gets used. So we are looking at putting all of that area onto this Zone 110 pump station as well.
It isn't, I mean, you talk about energy costs, which Phil was talking about. When you start talking about that being at least five miles uphill to that tank that's behind my house, by the way, and then gravity feed back down and stripping the pressure off of it, we're going to stop it from going out five miles up the hill at the intermediate and being able to disperse it. That's going to be a huge reduction in not only cost maintenance to the pipes and pressure, but also to electricity, I'm looking forward to that savings.
Yeah, makes sense.
And we'll save any leakage that comes from the system as it goes up and back down, too, so... So there should be some efficiencies in, in our water portfolio management going forward as well, right?
Yes.
Other questions, comments from the council? Any public comment? Good job, Eric. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Entertain a motion?
Here, I move to award city contract number 2019-160 to Waterworks Engineers LLC.
I was going to ask if we need to do these separate?
We can do this one. And, thank you, Jim. And city contract number 2019-161 to Fan Environmental Fan Contracting Joint Venture.
Can I ask a question now, though?
Yes, sir.
How come you could do this, these in one deal, and you couldn't do the other one?
He's an attorney, he said.
Because this is essentially a joint contract that you're approving together, whereas the resolution and ordinance were separate items.
Thank you, John. You did that explanation very well.
Clarity, that's good clarity. We do have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right. Here is a quote from Martin Luther King Jr. that I saw in the old Capitol building at our old state Capitol. "In the end, we will remember not the words of our enemies, but the silence of our friends." Have a great evening. This meeting is adjourned.